We'll now call this meeting to order. The first item up is addendum. Be it resolved, the Board of Supervisors hereby adds the following item to closed meeting: Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. One, Shawsville Volunteer Rescue Squad dissolution. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Ms. Boone.
Aye.
Ms. Demotsch.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
All right. For closed session, be it resolved that the Montgomery Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following: Section 2.2-3711, discussion or consideration of acquisition of real property for public purpose or the disposition of publicly held real property where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiation strategy of the public body. Corporate park.
Also, we have to say the other one.
I do have to say the other one, too. And also included, consultation of legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. One, Shawsville Volunteer Rescue Squad dissolution.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Fitchakowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Demotsch.
Aye.
Ms. Boone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Into closed meeting.[704.57]
A motion to come out of closed meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fiskowski.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Certification of closed meeting, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to the affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and where section two point two dash thirty seven eleven of the Code of Virginia requires certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia hereby certifies that to the best of each knowledge, each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification resolution applies, and two, only such public business matters as were identified in this motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Mr. Motts.
Aye.
Ms. Bone.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. Fiskowski.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair Blevins.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Right. At this time, I'd like to ask if our county administrator, Mr. Meadows, would lead us in a moment of silence and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes, if you're able, let's rise for a moment of silence and then I'll lead us in the pledge. Let us pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Please, sir. Okay. First up, we have a public hearing, a special use permit, Fathering Gate LLC Solar. Ms. Hopkins, hello.
Good evening. So as you stated, we have a request for a special use permit to construct a five-megawatt ground-mounted solar array on thirty-five acres. This property is located in the eastern portion of the county designated here by the star. It's right off of Roanoke Road Route eleven four sixty. The three parcels that are impacted are highlighted here in yellow. You can see this is Route eleven four sixty. This is the Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. And then this is your zoning map that shows the property is zoned agriculture A1. The blue across the street is zoned manufacturing M1. The red is general business. And then this land that is hatched is in the AFD district. So the property consists of three parcels, all of which are zoned agriculture A1. Following the first Planning Commission public hearing, the applicant proposed alternative concepts to enhance some of the buffer yards. They had held a community meeting and through that they rearranged the site layout, which then required a second public hearing because they added two parcels to their proposed plan and pulled some of the solar arrays off of Roanoke Road. The capacity is still five megawatts and the community solar project would offer a discount to local Appalachian Power customers. So the project is comprised of ten thousand five hundred and sixty solar panels and associated components. They would be mounted on a single axis and they do track with the sun, so they go up and down throughout the day. The full tilt would be a maximum of twelve feet in height and the rows of the array would be twenty-five feet apart center to center. There will be an all-weather road to provide access to the array. And then the applicant has also proposed to install additional vegetative buffer. The solar array was shifted from the original application as stated. It did increase the total distance of the project from one hundred and twenty-eight feet from Roanoke Road to three hundred and fifty-nine feet from Roanoke Road. The applicant does propose to also increase that vegetative buffer. So this was the original plan that was presented to the Planning Commission initially. And as you can see, it is on just one single piece of property. This is Roanoke Road and then this is a fifty-foot buffer. And then they come back and pulled some of those arrays off. The buffer then wound up going on some adjoining properties, which is why we had to advertise the additional properties. So these are some images. This is the undisturbed area of the property. So this area that you're looking at here would not be disturbed. This is along Roanoke Road. This is on the left looking back towards Christiansburg and on the right looking down Roanoke Road towards Salem. Here are your drone images. You can see the undisturbed area here in the front. Solar panels would start on this part of the property here and would extend to the rear. This is the vegetative buffer. It will not be removed. It will actually be enhanced with additional vegetation. And then this is just another view. You can see Route eleven four sixty. And then this is a view of the rear fields that you couldn't quite capture in that other photo. So there are no new roads or entrances proposed. They will use the existing entrances. You can see here. It will be constructed of an all-weather surface and the applicant has proposed a condition to submit a construction traffic mitigation plan. There were some concerns about the damage that could be done on Route eleven four sixty with all the construction traffic going in and out. So following construction, traffic would be limited to just the maintenance employees or operations by the, by the solar employees. VDOT will have to review the proposed entrance to ensure that it meets all requirements. The project does not lie in a FEMA-designated flood zone. Minimal ground disturbance is expected. Stormwater management areas were identified on the concept plan and a full review will be done should it be approved and make it a site plan review. They have proposed to do a grazing ground cover, which would allow them to lease it out to a farmer and they could utilize it for sheep. No topsoil will be removed from the property. And then at the project termination, the site components will be recycled or reused. And then the land can then return back to its ag use since they have not removed any of the topsoil. So the panels located behind the existing tree line maintain frontage along Roanoke Road for continued agricultural use. Information provided by the applicant through the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service shows that no environmentally sensitive areas are present on the proposed project area. And there is an existing freshwater pond and riverine on the property, however, it is not within the proposed area for the project. No native plants or wildlife species appear to be displaced and all permitting requirements from the county, state, and federal agencies would have to be met before any county permits could be issued. So the site topography setbacks fencing and vegetative buffer do address some of the aesthetic concerns. Buffers will utilize existing vegetation and increase the depth of the vegetation to screen the array from view. At the time of planning, they have conditioned themselves that the, the minimum will be eight-foot height in buffer area and that's for deciduous and for evergreen trees. The panels will have an anti-glare coating to absorb the sunlight. An eight-foot security fence of opaque chain link that does not contain barbed wire will be proposed around the entire array, so that way it's for security purposes. And then there will be an emergency services NOx box located on the site. Several people mentioned the view from Eastern Montgomery Elementary School. So when we were out with the drone, we captured some more images. You can see this is the, the school here. The only area in this picture that would actually have solar on it would be right in this area and that would be after a fifty-foot buffer. So probably just this little corner down here in the, in the right-hand portion. Then this picture is actually up on site. You can see the drive. This is probably the, the closest any child would be to the buffer area. You can see the natural buffer that's already existing. And again, there would be an additional buffer around the array. And then this is down from the school parking lot or drive area, right at the school. So you can see this is their stormwater detention facility and we just wanted to show the difference in topography there. So we zoomed in a little closer so you could see how steep that was. Here's more drone footage. Basically, we flew the drone at fifteen feet in the picture on the right to see what we could see when you look back toward Route eleven four sixty. And on the very left-hand side of the picture, you can see this is where the hay bales were on the other side of the fence. That's also the gate entrance to the back portion of the property. So you could have seen some traffic in that area, but again, this is without the enhanced buffer. So this is the existing buffer that's on site. Here's an overview of that. We estimate that to be fifteen to twenty feet in width at its largest. It would be increased to fif, to fifty feet should this be approved. And then this shows the buffer that goes around here and then the side buffer yard that would also be enhanced. So any lighting that would be on site has to meet the requirements of county code. Noise would be of greatest concern only during construction. They have conditioned construction hours of seven AM to seven PM, Monday through Friday, and pile driving activities would be limited eight to six. Once operational, the noise would be minimal. Most noise is generated by the inverters servicing the array. This is your comprehensive plan map. It is located in an area as resource stewardship. This includes many lands such as natural forest, protected areas, ag soils, and soils of local importance. So these are your planning and land use goals that we have pulled out. The preferred land use is agriculture, forestal use, and accessory uses directly related to the prefer, to supporting those preferred uses. Private and public conservation areas and farmland retention programs should be focused in this area. And the county may permit new non-agriculturally-related institutional uses by special use permit. So this does with, align with the comp plan in terms of a natural resource-based use. It does maintain substantial vegetation and forested areas of the property that are already on site. It does utilize a small percentage of the total father-in-gay farm for non-ag use with the applicant conditioning that no additional solar projects will be done on their property. So the economic benefits to the landowners allows for continued preservation of ag operations on the larger farm and maintenance of their open space and their historic structure. It does provide a direct benefit to the public once they start receiving the reduction rates through Appalachian Power. So the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance work in tandem to guide our development. It is, this is not a use that is specifically discussed in our two thousand and five comprehensive plan, but we did address it through an update to the zoning ordinance in two thousand and sixteen. We did add solar facilities to the ordinance as an allowed use by special use permit only in the agricultural district. So it does allow for the current property owner to maintain the ownership as stated before, continuing their onsite ag activities. These are the economic development goals. It does create thirty construction jobs. It should be noted that those would be temporary in nature only during the construction of the site. And then after that, one to two operations jobs. And it does increase tax revenue generated from the site through property taxes and other taxable sources. So this is the first major project we have seen in Montgomery County. The only thing close to it was the Correlian site and that was an accessory use to their hospital. It was five acres in sight, so it went through administrative review because it was not feeding back into the main transmission line. We have had other neighboring localities and honestly, in today's world and time, if you pull up a newspaper, you're going to hear about a solar project somewhere because it's, it's across the whole state. There is a need for new sources of renewable energy and there are lots of changes in legislation coming through. Should be noted that Appalachian Power has not been approved to the share program through the General Assembly as of yet. However, they do have a requirement that sites be obtained and ready to be built before you can even consider an application with Appalachian Power. That's why you see so many requests coming through and they haven't been built yet. So as a community solar project, the array would benefit APCO customers. There is not any substantial traffic, noise, or lighting impacts and the construction impacts appear to be mitigated by the conditions. It does support some goals by, of our comprehensive plan by allowing them to continue their farming operations. The proposed project has little impact on aesthetics. It is rather flat topography, so that limits some of the required site work. Topsoil will not be removed. That allows it to go back into an ag use once it's decommissioned. A small percentage of farmland would be utilized for the location of panels. And then it's located in a rural area surrounded by ag lands that's also owned by the father-in-gay estate, so that does limit the impact to adjoining property owners. It utilizes an existing tree line and creates an additional buffer and that additional vegetation will also create additional habitat for wildlife. The applicant staff has proposed an extensive list of conditions to further minimize the impacts. The applicant has proposed to mitigate aesthetic impacts specifically through a fifty-foot vegetative buffer. These were all conditions that came about after their community meeting. Security fence with opaque panels. So our zoning ordinance only requires fencing around the rear yard, but this would provide fencing around the entire yard. It also only requires a twenty-foot vegetative buffer on the front and sides and a twenty-five in the rear that has been extended to fifty foot all the way around. The vegetation will be a minimum of eight feet implant, at time of planting. Our current ordinance requirements are six feet for evergreens and we do not have any height requirements for deciduous. We only require two-inch caliper. So the initial public hearing was held on October twelfth. Ten members of the public addressed the commission. They were all opposed. The second public hearing was held on December fourteenth. Fifteen members of the, of the public addressed the commission. Three were in favor and twelve were opposed. And then the Planning Commission made a motion to recommend approval of the special use permit request. That motion failed on a four to five vote. Mr. Miller specifically stated that he wanted us to convey that they were more conflicted regarding the use versus being opposed to the project. These are the drafted conditions for consideration if you did choose to approve the request. I'm going to kind of summarize them because they are very long and very detailed. So the first is the master plan. It's our standard condition. The vegetative buffer, this speaks to the fifty-foot buffer and in areas that there's already vegetation, the zoning administrator will work with the applicant. They'll have to document what's there and then we'll have to determine what's lacking and add whatever is required to make that fifty-foot. Lighting, this is basically straight from our ordinance. So if any lighting is installed, these are the requirements that's in our ordinance. Zero point one foot candle shall not extend outside the 0.1-foot candles shall not extend outside the boundary of the property. Wetlands delineation, they will have to do a wetlands delineation and get that confirmed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers that will have to be submitted to staff for review. Permit by rule prior to the final site plan, DEQ has to have a permit by rule process, and we have to get a copy of that. Vegetative maintenance, so they must submit a solar grazing vegetative maintenance plan, and that ensures the sheep grazing is the primary method for a dual agricultural use. No signage shall be submitted in the property unless otherwise required. The fencing shall be installed. It shall be opaque, black, or neutral color and shall not exceed eight feet above the finished grade with no barbed wire. They'll submit an emergency management plan and work with emergency medical, emergency management services and the sheriff's department. They'll also provide an agreed-upon schedule to where if emergency services wants to have someone come in and train on the facility, they'll make that available to them. And then they will also provide all the contact information to emergency personnel, but they'll also have it posted on site. This is the construction management and mitigation plan. So, prior to the issuance of a permit, they have to provide that plan, and it shall address these items. Parking areas, the times of the pile driving and construction, as we discussed. Delivery traffic to the property shall not occur during school drop-off pick-up times, so there's no conflict with traffic. Appropriate methods for storage, transportation, and disposal of any waste and hazardous materials. And then as far as construction mitigation, things to control dust, smoke and burn mitigation, et cetera. Then the construction traffic mitigation plan, that has to be submitted and reviewed by VDOT and the zoning administrator. This goes over if there are damages done to Route 11460, they would then make those repairs within six months of being operational. We can also have a surety to guarantee that we have funds to cover those repairs. Off-site parking plan shall be submitted to the zoning administrator. That would be used by any construction workers that may not park on site. They would either be shuttled or bust in. We would review that plan to ensure that we had no more than 20 vehicles on the property for the project at any time. And then the decommissioning and restoration plan, this speaks to when it's at its end of its life, and they're going to recycle the panels or reuse them. We will be holding a surety to ensure that sufficient funds are available for us to remove those panels should it become necessary. And then we have to give them certain notice that they have to decommission. The height limitation of the structure shall not exceed 12 feet above grade. All photovoltaic panels on the property shall be made or coated with anti-reflective materials. They don't want to create glare or reflection because they're trying to absorb the sun, so they don't want to push it away. And then revenue or public improvements. So, pursuant to Virginia Code, solar energy projects sized at 5 megawatts or less are subject to machinery and tools tax. We can also improve a revenue share from solar, but we cannot do both at the same time. So, this goes over how we can collect machinery and tools tax. The first, they shall provide documentation that the selected panels are non-regulated waste under the Resource Conservation Recovery Act, and furthermore, they shall provide documentation that they are Tier One modules established by the most recent module tier list. Then the commencement, the facility shall be operational within 36 months from the date of adoption. This says of this resolution, but it should actually say of this ordinance. Authorizing the SUP or the SUP shall automatically be void. Our ordinance is two years, so they are requesting that additional year extension. And actually, General Assembly has been automatically giving them extensions, and they just approved one in this last legislative review. Shared solar, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit confirmation of the shared solar capacity to the planning director or designee, and that's once it's secured the capacity with Appalachian Power. No topsoil shall be removed from the property. And then no additional solar projects may be constructed under parcels owned by Father and Gay. The two in blue were also received at the end of the week. Environmental site assessments will be done on July 1 every 10 years, and then there's details there as to what happens if there needs to be some remediation. But those reviews and remediation has to occur before July 1 of the following year, once we're notified that there's an issue. Native pollinators, disturbed areas requiring reseeding. So, this is at any time throughout, plus on decommissioning of the site, they have to do that with native pollinators as identified in those sources. Part of their site plan will be a landscaping plan showing that ground cover. Adjoining property owners were notified. The applicant did hold a community meeting. Public hearing signs were also placed on the property, and we did advertise in the news messenger. Multiple items of correspondence have been received, and that should have been included in your packets. And as you can see, I believe we have several people here that would like to speak tonight as well. With that, I will take any questions you have for me. Mr. Becker is here with Pivot Energy. He can answer any questions, and I believe he also has a brief presentation for you.
Absolutely. We'll go around the room. Supervisors, do you have any questions at this time? Supervisor Ben.
On an earlier slide, probably like 10 slides before that, you mentioned institutional uses, and it was part of some description, and I'm like, I don't know what that really means.
Maybe it was one of the comp plan goals? Yes. Institutional uses, that would be like schools.
Could you read the context?
What else would be an institutional use?
It was...
Yeah, any government-type use, public use, public facilities.
And I just want to be clear that this cannot be seen from 460 anywhere, or it can be seen a little bit where the hay bales were.
Correct. So, you could see it there, and it is assumed there will be some type of gap because they'll have to leave a gate to access that property. So, it could be likely that it could be seen from there. When we flew the drone, we took it 15 feet, and we took it down that vegetative buffer, and we could not see the traffic on 460. I'm not saying that if you were coming down 460, you couldn't look down on it, but from where we were at, we cannot see back off the site onto Route 11460.
Coming down, but what about coming from the Salem area? Is there any opportunity that it can be seen?
I am not positive. I do not think so. The applicant might have some more information on that. I think they have done some visual studies. But I don't think coming from Salem, you would be able to see it. You might be able to see it if you went up the school drive at one part. You might be able to look over and see it, but once you're up on the school site, you won't be able to see it.
And then maybe not for adjoining property owners, but other property owners that are up the mountain, they could see it. Is that probably true?
Possibly.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd? Supervisor Fidzikowski?
I didn't hear you mention how high the solar panels would be mounted.
So, I'm not sure what the minimum height will be, but they will never extend above 12 feet.
12 feet.
So, that'll be from grade to the top of the panel. And it will be at its highest, I believe it's around midday or maybe even late day, probably late day. It'll be at its highest when the sun's setting and sun's rising.
And how would we calculate a surety amount when there won't be decommissioned for 30 years?
We have not done that calculation yet. I am assuming we will have them prepare a cost estimate, and then we will review it to see if that is sufficient. That's normally what we do on any projects that are being built. They have to submit that to us and show us.
Thank you.
And then we normally do include a contingency.
Thank you.
Supervisor King.
No questions. Couple of these done. I asked one I was going to ask.
Vice Chair Biggs.
Okay, so we don't know how many people would benefit from the project, and right now, there's no, there's nothing from the General Assembly saying that they can connect to AEP.
Correct.
My third comment or question. Okay, so, none of the other land on Father and Gay is supposed to be in the future use for solar, correct? But what if they sell off parcels of their land?
It would run with the parcel, so that restriction would run with the parcel.
That will go with whatever is sold.
Yes. We would take whatever parcels they own now, and it would be applied to those parcels.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Demots.
Just one question for right now. The Planning Commission voted to deny four to five?
Correct. Their motion to approve failed four to five.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Hopkins, just for clarification, I think Vice Chair Biggs, so there is no legislation for the shared solar with AEP right now. It's only Dominion.
My understanding is it's only with Dominion, not Appalachian Power. That did not make it past General Assembly this go around.
And this SUP, my understanding is the commencement would be 36 months?
Correct.
But the building permit after the shared solar would be passed, which is not with AEP, has to be within the 36-month timeframe as well?
Correct. So, they would, the General Assembly would have to, within the next 36 months, approve Appalachian Power for the shared solar program, and then it would have to be built within that same 36 months. And that is unless the General Assembly does an extension, which they did do this year. The extension they done was for the 36 months. So, you know, they could come in and say that we have to extend it another year or two years.
And there's nothing in our comprehensive plan outside of this SUP that directly, so that directly details this?
Correct. We do not have anywhere in the comprehensive plan that specifically discusses solar projects.
And talking about the surety bonds, would there be two separate surety bonds? You mentioned one for the improvements on the road in case there was damage, and then the surety for the decommission.
Yes, they would be separate because the one for the decommissioning, we would hold for life of the project. We do the same thing with telecommunications towers. But the one for the road improvements, we would hold until the end of those improvements, and we, VDOT confirmed everything was, all the repairs were made satisfactorily, and then we could release that surety back.
And I think somewhere it talks about once they do the decommission, reuse or recycle, what is the percentage of that that can be recycled or reused? Do we have any?
I do not know, but Mr. Becker can probably answer that question.
Okay. And then when they do decommission, they have to have all of that done within 365 days?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any follow-up questions? Supervisor Ben.
Isn't it true that Dominion was approved for solar, or I'm going to get this wrong. Dominion was approved to have alternative energy resources by a certain deadline, and Appalachian Powers' deadline is like 10 years after that?
I am not aware of that. I do not know. Yeah, I don't know either.
I think it's the case, but I could be completely wrong, but I think that's partially the reason why APCO has not, you know, it's not a priority.
Right.
Because, you know, their deadlines much further away, but thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Hopkins, one other question I just thought of that was mentioned, I have in my notes, emergency management plan and training.
Yes.
You might not be able to answer this question, but do our emergency services already have any type of training for this type?
I am not aware of any. Not any specific training. They may have some when it comes to like household solar.
They must for Correlian.
Maybe.
They have to.
That's something I would be, make sure that we're prepared, we're getting...
Yes, and I can definitely find out with Michael Geary. I can definitely ask him and get some answers.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Hopkins.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Buzz Becker with Pivot Energy on behalf of the applicant and the landowners about the project tonight. I wanted to confirm with Ms. Hopkins, I have 10 minutes?
Yes.
Okay, we're going to go quick. I'm going to try to touch on a lot of subjects and then hopefully have some time for your questions. And then I believe your questions are not on the same time limit, so we'd love to dive into a lot here. And let me see if I can't get this moving. Okay. Many themes that I'm ready to speak with you all about tonight that I'm sure are going to be common themes that you're going to hear from the residents here today about concerns here. Like I said, going to try to hit on them, come back with questions if we want to dive into more details. Again, this agricultural dual use was one of the big things that we heard from the community loud and clear is, you know, we might be interested in solar, but historically, these rear acres, as you see with my little infographic here, has been cattle grazing. So, we would like that to remain some type of dual agricultural use there. That was the feedback from the Planning Commission as well. Did want to put in a little bit of context as we think about agricultural acres within Montgomery County. So, we're talking about in that fenced acreage there, 28 acres. And as the Bree presented, only 24% of that 28 acres is actually covered by panels, which is a fraction of, you know, a percentage point of your over 100,000 acres of agricultural land in Montgomery County. But every acre is precious, and we want to make this dual use with as close as uses today from an agricultural standpoint. And so, that's why we're proposing sheep agrivoltaics or solar grazing. It's a really cool dual use of the property. We're saying, hey, number one, livestock by head count Montgomery County is cattle. Number two is sheep. And why sheep are such good uses for solar projects is they're small. So, when you think about that tilt of the panel at its lowest, it's 30 to 36 inches. And so, whereas cows are too big and too strong and bumping into these things, and goats are a little bit too indiscriminate in what they're willing to eat, sheep are really good fits. And what we would do is, as you see with our site plan, and maybe I can go back to that real quick, you almost think of these 28 acres. Oh, no, I'm going the wrong direction. Bree, how do I go back? The left arrow is not working. Page up? No, that's not doing it either. Oh, here we go. So, you see I have these kind of four sections here. This would be a group of 40 sheep essentially rotating between these sections with a local or regional shepherd. So, really cool use of a way to say, hey, historically, this has been cattle grazing. This has been agricultural use here. We want to bring all the exciting resources from a solar project and still have it be livestock grazing there. So, we partnered with the kind of the leaders in this, United Agrivoltaics, and actually, we just had an announcement with our company. 97% of the acreage in our 2022 solar portfolio, 97% of those acres are going to be managed by sheep grazing. So, it really is a priority for us going forward and is a permit condition, as Bree mentioned. So, something that we have to come back to you and do. Real quick, and this was in your packet, all the nitty-gritty and the Virginia Code associated, but as Bree said, hey, three sources of increased revenue from the county. Across those three, it adds up to over 100 times the current revenue from those acres to Montgomery County. And I'll just hit on them real quick. If you want to ask me more questions, I have them as backup slides here. But first, of course, it's in a deferred land use today, so pulling that out by doing some development on there would be a nine-times increase on those 28 site acres. Going on to machinery and tools tax and the revenue share, and Bree did a great job of this, is, hey, let's blend this and take a look at, based on the projected 30-year life schedule of the project, when is it in Montgomery County's interest to take one source over the other? And we did that math for you there. So, in total, we're looking at over $365,000 from that. Looking at environmental diligence, some of this was hit on before, but again, not in the floodplain. As you know, that's west of Rowan Oak Road. No wetlands as determined by Fish and Wildlife Services, but something we would have to confirm with Army Corps in the field before we could build. Certainly, we know the historic Father and Gay property is the one nearby, but the proposed site area is over a quarter of a mile away and would need a Department of Historic Resources confirmation of no impact from the proposed development. And this DEQ permit by rule process that Bree referred to, this is only able to be applied to once you have local land use approval, but essentially, it's a holistic, multi-agency, subject matter expert approach where conservation, recreation, historic resources, everyone takes a look and says, hey, this development is not going to have an adverse impact on the surrounding environment. Get into a little context for the proposal. So, we wanted to say, hey, these are A1 parcels. They are not in any kind of conservation easement. It's a development opportunity. Wanted to see what A1 looks like in Montgomery County. And as you know, the default front setback is 40 feet, but I asked county staff, hey, what are the biggest setbacks you have in your code for an A1 development? What type of land use? The two biggest ones we could find are a junkyard or automobile graveyard at 300 feet or a... or a animal slaughterhouse at 400 feet, just to put into context. And so we have our proposed front setback at just about 360 feet. And, and we would argue there are some more intensive applications that are allowed in A1 zone that, that we would not be as impactful there. Again, there's this question, and you'll hear from the landowner here tonight and some of the folks who work and live at the property, that the current status quo of what's going on in Fathering Gate is not financially sustainable for the upkeep of that historic property. And they've put years and tens of thousands of dollars into that upkeep. And they need to realize some value from their land, like I think all property owners in Montgomery County would. And, and these are some of the by right uses that would be potential, just to see, hey, what would make sense in A1 as identified as by right within Montgomery County? And so certainly, it's our hope tonight that this is a temporary solar project use that has a lot of great things and would be restored to, again, grazing land and agricultural use after. But certainly, a lot of things that are contemplated as by right uses in A1. Touching on the construction noise, did wanna get real specific about the analysis here. And so the two closest areas, as we look at Eastern Montgomery Elementary School, we measure out to be approximately 750 feet or 850 feet away. And we try to anticipate, how loud is the loudest part of construction? It's the pile driving. That's why we have specific parameters on time of day for that. On average, the pile drivers, based on kind of standard equipment that we see in these projects, is 84 decibels, around 84 decibels at 50 feet away. And so I'm gonna ask your forgiveness as I get a little wonky, but it's important to understand, hey, what would I anticipate at the door of the elementary school? And so we know based on acoustical science that every time you double your distance from a source, you're decreasing it by six decibels. So if I'm 84 decibels at 50 feet, I'm 78 decibels at 100 feet, and so on and so forth. And so what we're doing is, at our, at my closest point for that pile driving, that two weeks of pile driving activity, what does, on average, 800 feet away mean from a decimal sta, decimal standpoint? And that's 60 decibels. I'm sure most of us don't work in decimal calculations every day, but according to the FAA's comparative noise level chart, 60 decibels is the equivalent to conversational speech in a restaurant or an air conditioning unit 100 feet away. So this is the loudest part, the closest part of the construction. And certainly, that is from outside of the building. Inside, you're gonna hear even less. Really can be mitigated in, in a thoughtful way here and trying to do our homework to prove that to you. Did wanna get into that shared solar benefits. Had great questions from the board talking about, hey, why is this just Dominion up until this point? It's not active in, in APCO today or in Appalachian Power AEP. Our perspective is that this has been a called out program that's in bipartisan support. The governor and his energy plan talked about shared solar as an exciting opportunity that is hoping to be expanded to APCO soon. And one of the things about a program like this is you have to have just about all of your diligence done. You have to have your interconnection done, your local permitting done, everything until you're able to submit to that capacity. So that's why we're here a little bit early for you today. We talk about how this works. Why would there be discounts? The nature is, and this is how it works in Dominion today, and the model legislation that didn't make it out of committee is very much formed that way, is you would get a credit on your bill with AEP. And then the invoice you would get from the solar project for that credit that dramatically brings your AEP bill down is at a discount. And that's where you net out to have that monthly discount. This can be a little tricky and unintuitive, so I'd welcome questions and maybe we can slow walk that a little bit. To Supervisor, I think it was Bone's question about, hey, why is AEP or why is APCO a few years behind based on the law? That was originally in the Virginia Clean Economy Act. And so it was a recognition that Dominion's gonna be first out the gate and it's gonna have to hit that transition to renewable source earlier than APCO, but that all utilities, all investor-owned utilities within Virginia do have to get there. So that's within the Clean Economy Act. So it's not, again, it's not a matter if this is gonna happen in APCO, it's, it's kind of a when situation. And that's why we're trying to be somewhat ahead of the curve and develop a really thoughtful project for you. Doing some modeling about what that savings for low-income subscribers would be. And that's one thing I want to call out as we talk, talk about, you know, am I gonna get this discount? Is there this minimum bill question? Are there fees involved? One of the good things about this legislation is that it, low-income subscribers are not subject to any other minimum bills or things like that. The, the discount you see is the discount you get. And so based on our modeling of the project, we're looking at about 800-ish, just under 800, what we call average customers on size. Some of you all might use a little bit more power, some a little bit less. But based on what we see in AEP's rates, these are the type of numbers on a monthly and annual basis and, and really kind of meaningful cost savings over the life of the project, especially for the most bill burdened or cost burdened folks in the county. And that's, that's all I have. Certainly, a, a lot of things to discuss. The one thing I wanted to call out, and this, I didn't have a slide on this, but there were questions before about, you know, this is a project, you're connecting to AEP, you're connecting to APCO, why aren't they here speaking on this? What I, what I would say is, while that is a part of the, maybe the business proposal, that is a publicly regulated utility that does not come out and speak on land use decisions that are not their projects, similar to if I was proposing a sheets to you today, PepsiCo and Exxon is not gonna come and speak for my project. And so certainly, it's a part of the business and something that we'd be involved in, but are not interested in a land use decision. So I welcome any questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Do we have any questions? Supervisor Bone?
What would happen if no one wants any of the solar savings?
Yeah, if no one subscribes to it. That's a great question. We would, we would probably be in a difficult place to be able to sell the project in terms of selling the output of the project. I think our, our hope and intention is going especially to folks who work in these communities. So whether it's nonprofit groups or local, like low-income housing groups to say, hey, this is a trusted person who can give you, deliver these savings. What's great about my company, because this is the type of project we do, these community solar, especially low-income benefiting community solar projects, is that we have, in other markets that are a little bit more mature than Virginia, we have those third-party entities that can vouch for us. Say, hey, I've been working with Pivot for so many years. In fact, in Colorado and other places, they actually say, hey, no, my members benefit from this. I'll actually show up to these hearings because they do see that, that benefit. So like in all business, you know, there's a risk, I guess, something could not work out. But if I'm coming to you for free locally sourced renewable energy at a discount, it's a pretty good deal.
And then my, my, it's more of a statement than a question. I was just visiting some family up in New York State.
Yeah.
And my sister could participate by using solar energy for her house, but she would actually have to pay a premium for it.
In New York?
Mm-hmm.
Interesting. Yeah. No, no premium for this? I mean, and that's the nature of it, is, you know, no one's gonna sign up if we're not offering a discount. And so it's, it's kind of intuitive from a market standpoint there. What you'll see in some places is, folks are putting solar on their rooftop, for instance. That's a lot of upfront cost. And so it's not accessible to a lot of people, especially if it's not being subsidized by other folks. Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Just one question.
Yes, sir.
So the panels are 36 inches off the ground?
That's right. Yes, sir.
And no higher than 12 foot? So how big are the actual panels?
Well, you typically think of like a meter by two meters.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. That's all I have.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
The, the discount, is that based on a average of electricity that's produced? I mean, if you go through a spell where the panels aren't producing a lot, does the discount drop?
So how it works is, when we design these projects, we model based on the location and kind of just known weather patterns, how much energy that panel would produce or that project would produce at that location. So when we connect to the grid, they know, hey, we're gonna produce a lot more power in the summer than the winter, just naturally, stuff like that. When you subscribe to a project, you essentially take, hey, these are my past 12 months of bills. This is what I typically use in a year. And I want to associate that much usage from your project. And so that's why you're getting that bill credit, is you're saying, hey, I use, you know, 1,300 kilowatts this month. Great. That is the amount of bill credit you get. And we just do that every month. We kind of average it out.
Thank you.
Yeah. And so I did wanna talk, oh, excuse me, Chairman, there's a question about the bill, the bonds and getting that estimate. What we typically do in some places is we pay for a third-party estimate on the decommissioning security and make sure that that's updated every five years. So it's not just us bringing to you information that we think that we're pretty confident in, but you have someone else corroborating that. And it's updated as commodity prices, of course, steel is a big part of that estimate over the life of the project.
Thank you. Supervisor King? Vice Chair Biggs?
Where else in Virginia have you done projects?
Yeah, we're active in a lot of places. We don't have any currently under operation. And so we're working in, we have permit approvals in Hurt, Virginia, down in Pennsylvania County. We're active in James City County and Westmoreland. Got some in Campbell County coming here, obviously, Isle of Wight. And then me personally have developed in a lot of these counties too.
Okay. So in those counties, some of those counties with Dominion then?
Most of those counties are Dominion.
So you already can do that with Dominion, right?
That's correct. Yeah. And if you look at Dominion for their shared solar program, they actually have a public website where you can see which projects have gained that capacity. One of our projects there is the, one of two projects in the whole Dominion program that's 100% low-income dedicated. That's something we're pretty proud of.
Okay. And are you using the same kind of model with the agriculture in these projects? Or is it dependent on where they are?
Some of it depends on the priorities of the county. And that's kind of our default. And we say, hey, this is a great opportunity, it's a lower cost. Some folks don't want the sheep there. They'd rather us just do kind of a pollinating meadow situation. And that's a, a great option as well. But it's kind of up to what the community wants to prioritize.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Supervisor Demonts?
I have just one question about the nature of the relationship with, with United Agrivoltaics.
Yeah.
So just so I can understand, do they advise on the land use? Or do they actually contract with a sheep farmer themselves? Does a sheep farmer then become an employee of that company? How does that all work?
So similar to how the landowner currently leases out their acres for cattle grazing or agriculture or whatnot, it would be a similar situation for a local or regional flock herder. And so United Agrivoltaics, they're kind of just the expert in, hey, this is what this looks like typically. So they have essentially the plan, this is how many sheep we need, this is how I bring my water on, this is how I fence them off. Like they're the subject matter experts that we contract with to do this type of work.
But if you were to contract with a shepherd, that shepherd would have the contract with Pivot Energy?
It would be, it would be a part, it would be a, they would be contracted to the project with us and, and United Agrivoltaics. That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Becker, I have a question. You said for the construction for the pile driving, that would only take two weeks?
Roughly two weeks. The overall construction's about a 13-week process for a project of this size. But when I think about that loudest pile driving activity, it's around two weeks. Yes, ma'am.
And then a question on security. I know you're having the fence and it, there's not gonna be barbed wire on, on the fence.
Yes, ma'am.
What kind, and the other, other projects that you've had, these other localities are, in your experience, what type of security issues have you had?
Not many. I mean, we, we kind of joke that if there's anyone there, they're, they're trespassing, we'd ask them not to. And in a lot of places, they don't like the barbed wire there because of the aesthetic look. So what we will do is actually have some cameras out that can see, that are kind of motion censored cameras, especially at night if someone is trying to break in. That's where it helps that we have liability insurance with these projects as well. So pretty well locked up. And then, of course, have that insurance for if anyone actually is getting pretty aggressive there.
And that's what brought the question, is that in some of these places with the fence, you may have barbed wire. So I was concerned about, you know, why would you have that? Obviously, that would be a big deterrent for someone to break in. But, but that was a concern for my, for me.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other follow-up? Supervisor Bone?
I'm not doing very well of giving everybody my questions in one whack, so I apologize for that. We had some questions about the disposal of the panels, what kind of EPA issues or anything like that. Can you speak to that a little bit?
Would love to. And that was, if you saw that new condition about the T-clip testing, and, and thank you for bringing that up Supervisor. It's a little technical, but what that T-clip test says, it's an EPA test that says, hey, we have taken this material, have grounded it into a pulp and done basically like an acid wash to see, what is that leaching result? Are there any hazardous chemicals or materials that come out of it? And this is before I put any materials onto a property. I have a certification from the manufacturer that says this thing is safe in like the absolute worst-case natural disaster. Even, so we, we have that. That's, that's a great protection there. And then even through the life of the project, we're saying, hey, not only is our material safe from day one and we have that certification to you, but through the life of the project, we're gonna monitor the health of the soil in that area, which, which is a big one. In terms of decommissioning, and you'll see this from the salvage value, steel is a lot of that from a weight standpoint and a value standpoint. In terms of reusing materials, even though these are manufacturer-approved lives 25 to 35 years from the materials, oftentimes, they do have some useful life. We try to use especially the panels and the inverters for kind of low-income housing projects that we do in some places. And then, of course, the steel is just gonna have a natural salvage value there.
My husband and I got solar last year, October. It was fantastic. Our, our electric bill was very, very low. November and December, completely the opposite because it's so cloudy. So going off of Supervisor Fidzikowski's question, what you do is just estimate the savings and level it out. That's what you said, right?
Correct.
Versus, you know, global warming's happening and we're having more and more sun. The savings will be passed on eventually if the average is not exactly right.
It's interesting. May I rephrase the question?
Yes.
For comment? So as, so we, we model the production of the panel based on where they exist in the world and kind of known sun. As the sun patterns change, as weather changes, does that production then get passed on in savings? That's a, that's a really good question. I've actually, many years in this line, never had that question before. That's pretty good. Here, here's what I would say is, when folks subscribe to a project, it is based on an anticipated amount of electricity usage. So what we would say is, you, you are kind of set within that first 12 months of, hey, this is how much I want to subscribe to you. The, I think where I would, and I'm going off the cuff here, so I guess I'm asking your forgiveness there. But if things are getting much warmer, I'm assuming you're using more electricity, air conditioning, and other things as well. And so as your consumption of electricity changes, that would likely track with the production of the array. And then you could subscribe to any new amount that way. It was just off the cuff, so.
But you would pass on the savings.
At, at that, at that bill?
There, if.
If they're looking to consume more? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Two other things. Natural disasters.
Yeah.
We do have forest fires in this county. What happens if, gosh forbid, something happens in your neck of the, in this neck of the woods?
Yeah.
To the panels?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, so we would, if, if they're no longer operable and it's something we can monitor their output remotely, so certainly we'll have folks in the region to be doing that maintenance. But if a panel goes out for whatever reason, we can go check and replace that. But if we were to have kind of, you know, catastrophic disaster, from a replacement standpoint and a liability insurance standpoint, any damage to the property or the surrounding area would be covered under that. And then the replacement and getting that project back up and running is also a part of that.
But is there any toxic gas let out if, if a panel goes up in flames?
No. And, and that's going back to that T-clip test that's so important, is these are non-hazardous materials.
And then the second thing is, for all, my panels at home, they are tested with golf ball hail.
Yeah. Very resilient.
Is that what yours are too?
It's the same idea, and you probably have tier-one panels because it's just the industry standard. But what, what's wild about this, and people ask about, hey, if this panel gets some blunt impact, if it breaks, does it shatter? It's actually treated with a similar coating as your windshield. So even if someone's coming out with like a sledgehammer, which, you know, again, we'd ask folks not to do. But if you really wanna take it to these panels, it, it's not gonna shatter. It's not gonna be working maybe, but they're very, very resilient from that standpoint. And even if, again, this leaching testing, it's literally grinding them up into these centimeter-style pieces and, and chewing a tumble wash and saying, hey, could I put this in the soil? And you can safely.
Thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor Demonts?
I'm sorry, I have just one follow-up question.
Please.
You've mentioned twice using either Wi-Fi or remote in capability. So remoting in to monitor the panels and then Wi-Fi for your cameras. Have you verified that that is available at the site?
In terms of reception there? That's a great question. I, I would need, I would need to follow up with you. That, that's a kind of an O and M question that I've gotten before, but I can follow up with you.
Thank you. I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Good. Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate your presentation. At this time, we will, we will open up the public hearing to the public. Each citizen has four minutes to speak on this issue. I have a sign-up sheet. I will call the names on the sign-up sheet first, once we've concluded with that. I have a sign-up sheet. I will call the names on the sign-up sheet first, once we've concluded with that. Then if any other citizen would like to address the board on this topic, you may. You'll have four minutes. Once the light starts flashing yellow, that's your one-minute warning. We'll start off, and when you come forward, you'll state your name and your address. Debbie Owen. Then after Debbie Owen, we'll have Stephanie Sisson.
Hi, my name is Debbie Owen. I live at 2682 Hickman Hollow Road in Charlottesville. I'm here tonight to encourage the board to vote no to this proposal. Instead, I ask that the board consider developing a solar ordinance that will guide the county in its transition to renewable energy. If we establish clear guidelines for solar developments with community input, I am certain that this site would not be selected. There are many reasons this site is not appropriate. I will focus on conservation. While we all know that there's natural beauty in this valley, we may not be aware that it was identified more than 20 years ago by the Virginia Outdoors Foundation, the New River Land Trust, the Blue Ridge Land Conservancy, and the Virginia Department of Conservation and Recreation for its important ecological and scenic attributes. Over the past 20 years, Montgomery County has approved permanent conservation easements for five farms that are adjacent to or within sight of the proposed solar project. Additionally, eastern Montgomery County landowners either donated or sold property to the Commonwealth of Virginia for the creation of the nearby Pedlar Hills Glades Natural Area Preserve. In total, this section of eastern Montgomery County has over 3,500 acres of land under permanent protections from developmental and environmental encroachments. These easements were placed for numerous reasons, including the following. The South Fork of the Roanoke River is a state-designated scenic river. It is also on the EPA DEQ Endangered Rivers and Streams list for impaired water quality. At least two endangered species of fish swim in the waters of the South Fork and have federal protection. There's multiple rare, threatened, and endangered plant species found both on the private easements and in the Pedlar Hills Preserve. The state has invested significant tax dollars in protection of these species and their unique environment. Father and Gay Farm and the surrounding valley also have significant scenic and historic value. Landowners considering a conservation easement are required to place restrictions on all of their contiguous property. A landowner can't subdivide or save part of their property for later development as a tool to enhance the value of their parcels. Father and Gay owners realize a direct financial benefit by owning adjacent land that will never be developed. Their views and privacy are protected in perpetuity as their property sits in the middle of one of the most conserved areas in this part of the state. To approve the development of even a few acres with 10,500 steel and black solar panels in the middle of these protected areas would be short-sighted and unfair to all the work to preserve this valley. Father and Gay is currently represented by a generation of absentee landowners. We know the struggle to keep up a historic farm such as this must be immense. But we would be remiss not to recognize the benefit they reap from the surrounding conservation efforts and historical designation. Their farm was chosen by Pivot because it's a cheap and easy area for them to develop. Other counties such as Madison place restrictions through their solar ordinances that prevent development on historical sites and keep solar on industrial zone land. Cheap and easy cannot be the primary considerations for our transition to renewable energy. If Montgomery County does its diligence as other counties have, this site would not be chosen for solar development. Thank you.
Stephanie Sisson, and then after Stephanie, Alan Childress.
My name is Stephanie Sisson. I live at 3137 Allegheny Spring Road in Charlottesville, Virginia. I'm here to ask you to vote no on the Father and Gay proposal. First and most importantly, Montgomery County has no solar ordinance in place. It is reasonable to want the county to look into the issues surrounding this industry and come up with a solar plan. Current zoning is vague and simply states that solar is allowed. We have time to get this right for all the citizens of Montgomery County. Pivot does not. Pivot's timeline should not be Montgomery County's timeline. This company is in a hurry to get projects in a pipeline for funding purposes. And they are not concerned with where they are located. They are looking for the cheapest and easiest access to three-phase power. Solar fields are an expensive endeavor without government subsidies. They are not economically viable. This creates a gold rush mentality to get as many projects past local government as fast as possible, and in my opinion, with little or no involvement of the community. Pivot did not meet with the community until after we showed up at the first planning commission meeting. The county's only contact with the community prior to that was a tiny sign placed in front of Father and Gay, where the speed limit is 65 miles per hour. And also an advertisement in the local, I think it's Montgomery County Messenger, a newspaper which is a dying circulation. That's pretty much the only way these things get put out there anymore. There are many questions about allowing these projects to go forward without a solar plan in place. Does the county revenue share revenue to offset the loss of the agricultural and tourism revenue? This was added to the application, but there is no way to hold them accountable for it. What we, what do we want to do about decommissioning? The original application has a surety of $300,000 at the end of the 30-year in the original application. I don't think that's going to pay to clean up the mess when it's all done. There was much talk about shared solar and job fairs. The fact is, AEP does not currently accept solar subscriptions. There is no opportunity for reduced electric bills via a shared solar credit. Dominion Energy is the only company in Virginia that offers a shared solar credit, and they charge a $50 fee, wiping out any savings from the solar subscription. This project will be built using a Northern Virginia construction contractor and after that require little or no local employment. As opposed to the being, being leased as farmland, this creates many local jobs. Pivot will claim that they have addressed many of these questions, but with no ordinance in place, there is no way to hold Pivot or any future company accountable. The proposed site is one of the oldest historical sites in Montgomery County. It is the gateway to Montgomery County and should be preserved for its historical and cultural value. It is surrounded by land conservation properties, and this should be a consideration when citing solar fields. Elston has become the dumping ground for a lot of industry. Currently, it has a torn-up gas pipeline project, an abandoned emerital railway project, and we cannot forget the infamous trash train. What if this company decides to abandon the solar field? Without an ordinance in place to ensure succession of the project, what happens when they decide to sell the lease? This is very common in the solar industry. They sell leases all the time. Or abandon it entirely when smaller, more efficient.
Thank you, Ms. Sisson.
I didn't get there.
Alan.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Childress, and then Casey Phillips.
Alan Childress, 3750 Old Town Road, Charlottesville. I've had a lifelong appreciation for the history and legacies that are associated with Father and Gay Farm. I'm asking you to vote no tonight on a proposal before you. Furthermore, I'm asking that you move forward with directing the county to develop a comprehensive ordinance that defines where it is appropriate for renewable energy companies to develop projects in Montgomery County and to set a high bar for those companies and how they will operate both during construction and over the life of the project. I'm also asking that you ensure this effort works to protect historic and prime farmland across Montgomery County. The proposed site for this solar farm is located on the eastern edge of Father and Gay Farm on the Ellison Straightaway, or Happy Valley, as it's been long called. The property is a short walk from a Native American Indian settlement identified by the Virginia Division of State Archaeology. The great road ran along the natural terrace of the valley, and improvements to the trail were made when the Allegheny and southwestern turnpikes were constructed in the first half of the 1800s. A tavern on the site became popular during the Revolutionary War and was reported to have served historic figures including General George Washington, General Andrew Lewis, and their aides. General Andrew Jackson stopped there en route to his inauguration in Washington. Owner Colonel, excuse me, Owner Colonel George Hancock served in the American Revolution as a member of the Virginia Line. After the war, Hancock was a successful lawyer, a member of the Virginia House of Delegates, and a member of the Third and Fourth U.S. Congresses. Hancock's daughter Julia married William Clark, the Lewis and Clark team, on January 4, 1808. Julia died at Father and Gay in 1820. Her father died two weeks later, and both his and Julia's remains were interred in the land, excuse me, legendary vault that sits on the hillside directly behind the home. Landowners of the property at Father and Gay used enslaved labor to work the land, and the historic property has at least two cemeteries, possibly other unknown enslaved burials and much earlier burials of industrial, excuse me, indigenous people who were previously lived in the area thousands of years before. Father and Gay is listed in the Virginia Landmark Register and was only the second home in Montgomery County to be included in the National Register of Historic Places. Opening the door to large solar installations within the view shed of this historic farm should not happen. Thank you.
Casey Phillips, and then after Casey, Dabney Larp.
Thank you. My name is Casey Phillips, and I reside at 2835 Dry Valley Road in the Riner District. I come to you tonight as a landowner, a dairy farmer, and the president of Montgomery County Farm Bureau. I'm here representing our nearly 2,000 voting members here in the county. If you remember, back in August, I invited all of you to come to our Ag Vision meeting. During that meeting, we proposed issues that farmers are facing here in the county. And one of those major issues were solar panels. We asked that Montgomery County needs to consider the impact of solar projects that will have on the local economy and current land use. We believe that farmland should not be lost to the development of industrial solar programs. Ordinances for the development of large solar projects should have standards to protect our citizens, industries, farms, and wildlife habitats. And those of you that came, I appreciate you endorsing that Ag Vision that we set forward. I'm also, I'm here tonight to ask you to vote no on the proposed project at Father and Gay. I also sent you out each a letter on December 3 outlining some of our concerns with the environmental impacts, what would happen if soil is removed from the, from the farm, and, and many of the other things. Virginia Farm Bureau has policy that we recommend utility-scale solar facilities be placed on brownfields, landfills, rooftops, reclaimed mine sites. We also took a recent trip to Puerto Rico for the American Farm Bureau. One of the neatest things we saw there was solar panels over parking lots. So not only did you get the benefit of an area that's already developed, but you get to park under it so your cars aren't blazing hot from the sun or you're out of the rain and stuff like that. That's also located in where the, the energy is most used. We are concerned also about the environmental impacts of solar panels. These things have been proven to leach heavy metals into the soil. We are concerned about soil being removed. I know in the presentation it said it will not be removed from site, but it did not say it would not be disturbed. If there is a place where they have to collect rainwater from, from this site, they will have to dig upon, soil will be disturbed. It takes over 100 years to grow one-inch topsoil. This farm will never be the same way it is in 30 years from now. We, this company is not local. It's not somebody here in the county. It's not somebody from Virginia that's wanting to put this in. They're from Colorado. I do not believe that they care about this community and what it will do to it. What I am asking you to do tonight is to establish a committee or a working group made up of citizens, agricultural leaders, solar experts from Virginia Tech, and even solar company representatives to develop an ordinance that we can address a lot of these concerns in moving forward. If this one's approved, this is just going to steamroll, and we're going to see more and more of these, and it's going to chew up farmland. Where are you going to get your next meal from when they're all under solar panels? I don't think you can eat those. I also encourage you to adopt a resolution tonight that you will not pass any, any solar project panels until this working group has met and has come back to you with a proposal.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
Dabney Larp, and then Caroline Dickinson.
Hello, Supervisors. How are you? My name is Dabney Jacob.
My apologies.
I am one of the owners of Father and Gay LLC. I'm the manager, one of the two managers of Father and Gay LLC. How do you do? And I appreciate your listening to us. As everyone has said, yes, we have a historic house. Father and Gay was purchased from Colonel Hancock's widow after his death in the 1830s. And so my family has owned this house for over 175 years. When my grandparents inherited the house in the 1850s, it was a shambles. Chickens were roving around inside of it. It was just, you know, half of a house. And there was no kitchen, no, the bathrooms weren't there. And so they undertook it to preserve the house. They added the wing, the right-hand wing that you see now, so that the whole house is symmetric. And, you know, obviously totally renovated it inside and out, put bathrooms and kitchen, kitchen in it, and saved it from almost total disrepair. So when my grandparents, my, my parents, my mother and her brother inherited it, and they did after, my grandparents actually lived there for 20 years and farmed. My grandfather had a cattle farm. He bought additional lands all the way up to the school, yeah, to the lower school, elementary school. Actually, passed that all the way up to the high school. When our generation took over about 12 years ago, the house had also hadn't been worked on since the 18, 1950s. We put a new roof on, new gutters, and spent every cent that we possibly could. We did everything we could, selling tree, you know, harvesting trees. Madison Marie helped us figure out different things that we could do. And we have rented to farmers for these years. Although we do not live there, we visited. I've visited ever since I was a little girl, over 60 years. And we've visited for several months. We manage it from, go and come up frequently to take care of the farm and different businesses, different things that have gone on. My point is that we've always been very good stewards to that farm. We've also been good neighbors to the valley. I think my grandfather worked hard with Madison Marie to keep the interstate from going through the valley years ago. And as you may know, our farm was called upon because we are one of the only ones that don't have a conservation easement to provide land for the lower school, the elementary school, which we, you know, we were required to sell our land for that, and did. And did it willingly. I mean, we, we did it. We were good neighbors about that. As we considered this solar project, we've looked at everything to be able to take care of the house. We felt like it met two of our objectives. It, obviously, we can't, couldn't see it from the house nor from the road. And we were guaranteed that there would be buffers in it. Even before we knew any of this, we also had a guarantee from them that they would take the panels out with a bond. So as, as Mr. Becker said, this is just the first step in many towards the approval of it. But it's a hope for us that it's a, it's a way for us to maintain the house for a number of years. And that just feels really good to us. So we, we hope that our neighbors will respect our right as a landowner just as we respect their rights as landowners and will reconsider some of their objections. And I hear all the objections.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much.
Caroline Dickinson, and then after that, George Michael.
Hello. I'm Carolyn Dixon, and my address is 1651 Little Cotaba Creek Road. I have been with the family for over 20 years. I'm property manager there. I'm property manager there. I've been with, this is the second generation, until my age, right? But anyway, I know that we would really appreciate it if you all would vote yes for this. I know it's a long process coming. It's got a lot to go through, but in firsthand of helping them take care of the finances of Father and Gay and the upkeep of Father and Gay, that it takes a lot to upkeep this historical place. And we do have, of course, we rent the farm, and being that this would be, I think they said 28 acres, we still have 300-some acres that would still be farmland, and we appreciate our farmer, and, but, and then we, you know, there's the money that's coming in, the expenses weigh or over what's coming in, and it's very costly, as you can imagine. So I'm here and asking on behalf of the family, and have been with them and love them, and we work great together, I think this would be a good way for us to go, and I'm asking you to vote yes, because there are, like Buzz said, other avenues we could take, you know, to, which would be bigger than this, or whatever, you know, we're trying to keep this as, you know, something that, like they said, it wouldn't be seen from the road, it wouldn't bother anybody, it's something that would help us at Father and Gay with the assets and with keeping it up, because there's still work to be done all the time at Father and Gay, believe me, a lot of work, you know, to be done. So I would, we would really appreciate it if you all would take this step and say yes, and then, because we have a lot more steps to go, as you know. And so we would just like to begin with you all and move forward with this. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. George Michael, and then after George, James Peirman.
Put my glasses on. I'm not much of a public speaker here, but my name is George Michael, and I live at 8339 Roanoke Road, and that's the resident, that's Father and Gay. So again, say hello. My name is George Michael. I'm the caretaker at Father and Gay, and have been for the past 23 years. So even though I'm a West Virginia transplant, after 23 years of living at Father and Gay, I believe I've earned my stripes as your neighbor and friend in the community. I'm so excited about the possibility of producing clean energy within the county. You see, as much as I have grown to love Father and Gay, I've also grown to love the people I have resided near in this community. People like Rodney Nicky and Bubba Hurst, Joyce Graham, and at the last meeting, I finally had the honor of meeting Tom Duncanberger, who Rodney Hurst described as one awesome man, and I agree. I'm telling you these things to make this personal about our community and Father and Gay and the wonderful and gracious family that owns it and has owned Father and Gay since 1840. Because of this family, the beautiful historical old mansion is still sitting there in all her historical beauty and grandeur, and her bright red roof shining in the sunlight with a mountainous backdrop that will take your breath. And the owners of Father and Gay have treated me just as they have treated her, with love, kindness, and loyalty. I just hope I have shown them the same. So with everyone worrying about the beautiful fall drive down Fort 60 being compromised, don't worry, we've got this, but it takes money. And with Pivot Energy and Buzz Becker teaming with the family, the family will treat you to Father and Gay's beauty, just as it sits there today, for 30 more years, just like they have for the last 180 years. By producing clean solar energy, the revenues will be used to keep her beautiful and taken care of. By the way, the last project Montgomery County Commission and Father and Gay owners got together on produced a wonderful elementary school in a great location. I think we can all agree that was a huge success. Regardless of the decision, Father and Gay will always be a major part of this community. So I ask you to trust and respect the family's right to supplement the income of Father and Gay with clean solar energy, so we can keep her as beautiful as ever, just as we respect all landowners' decisions with their own property. God bless Father and Gay, her existence, and all the wonderful people gathered here tonight. I ask you to vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. James Peirman, and then Ellen Ryan.
Good evening. My name is Jim Peirman. I reside at 4130 Old Town Road in Shawsville. I was born and raised in Shawsville and currently reside there. I go to church in Shawsville and am an active member of Shawsville Warden Club and Eastmont Community Foundation. My office is in Salem, so I drive the Elliston straightaway at least twice per day. I've been driving this road for almost 60 years. The beauty of this day, of this drive starts my day with an appreciation of living in this beautiful area, and it closes my day in the same way, regardless of what type of day it's been. I do not speak against the proposed solar factory, but in favor of making this important decision in a judicious manner, taking into consideration all the factors that should be considered. I respect the property rights of landowners, and I commend those landowners that have placed conservation easements on their land along the straightaway. The long-term unknown consequences of this type of project warrant careful study and consideration. This decision should not be made based on proffers from the applicant without enforceable ordinances and careful evaluation. There are many factors that should be carefully considered and weighed against the long-term effects of this beautiful part of eastern Montgomery County. These factors have been enumerated in correspondence to the board and will be addressed by other speakers this evening. I understand the importance of developing alternative energy sources. I also understand the importance of retaining agricultural land and view shed that makes this part of Virginia such a desirable place to live. You may ultimately decide that a solar farm is an appropriate use of the land. However, I believe that the agency's charge with governing Montgomery County should invest the time and resources to make the comprehensive plan, amend the comprehensive plan, and pass a solar ordinance with specific requirements and guidelines for these rapidly emerging solar factories. I believe this type of evaluation would be required if this project had been proposed for other parts of Montgomery County. I ask for the same consideration for eastern Montgomery County. Thank you for allowing me to address you this evening. Go Hoopies.
Ellen Ryan, and then Emily Cantrell.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Ellen Ryan, and I live at 4295 Walnut Grove Road in Shawsville. And I'm going off remarks a little bit, because I rode down to the, to the site of this, and my sight of what is on the map is different. And I will tell you that if you can look at this little map, you see that it goes all the way up to the tree line. There's, the drone may not give you the elevation, but drive down the straightaway and look right next to elementary school. It's the last field before the elementary school, and there's a tree line at the top, and these are going to go all the way up to the tree line. I took the time to get out of my car, to walk at the elementary school. They didn't get out and walk. There's way more to the back of the elementary school, and there's a perfect sightline through the, through the trees. We're going to see these from the road, so I, I'm, I'm, just have to open with that and probably use up all my time for that, but anyway, now I'm going back to script. So we show up at the planning commission and just really didn't know a whole lot about it. Buzz makes his presentation, very professional and idyllic, like tonight. I'm thinking, oh my, this is going to happen. You could tell the planning commission was impressed. It looked like our community was a little late to the party. Sheep grazing under the panels, bees buzzing and pollinating, wonderful buffers, helping the community, and mainly the less fortunate with shared solar, and wow, reduced electric bills, huge tax benefits for the county. And last promise, a $1,000 donation per year to the Eastmont Community Foundation, a charitable organization that is near and dear to our hearts, and we've had a long and wonderful relationship with the Board of Supervisors and the county. And by the way, casino night is this Saturday. Comments from the planning commission that night, the board? This definitely fits the comprehensive plan. Need to be mindful of owners' rights. The General Assembly is breathing down our necks. We need to do this in a timely way. Our little band of eclectic people who happened to show up that night in a desperate last stand said, could we at least table this for some more information? Part two of our journey begins. Our little electric, eclectic group got together, research started. Most of what we found out, we sent to you in an email and a document that you received prior to tonight. We reached out to members of the community. We asked Henry Bryant about the history of the valley. Julia knew Casey Phillips from Farm Bureau. Tom Duncanberger hooked us up with Blue Ridge and New River Land Conservancy. Crystal knew Ron Meyer, an expert in solar information. We talked and planned, seemed whatever we mentioned to almost anyone, Father and Gay and the solar panels, they said, oh no, it's so beautiful. Our little group dug and talked. We fact-checked, and if there was a gray area, we did not include it on our report. We stayed as apolitical as possible. Not one of us, not one of us is against solar. We just want it somewhere else on, on green, on brownfields and parking lots and people's houses. Anything you build, put solar panels on there. Okay. So when I returned to the, to the pivot presentation, sheep grazing, you got to have water there for them, bees pollinating, you have to have the hive close. Everything sounds real good till you dive in a little bit. In closing, I don't want our journey to end. I'm deeply committed in my belief that solar project at Father and Gay is not something the county should approve, but our little eclectic group, we want to really work and help the county.
Thank you, Ms. Ryan.
And the, and help the county make a comprehensive plan that works.
Thanks. Emily Cantrell, and then Nathan Myers.
Hello. My name is Emily Cantrell. I live at 850 Plantation Road, Blacksburg. I am in support of the shared solar project. I want to be able to look forward to a future on a healthy planet for myself and for the children of Montgomery County. To achieve that, we need to rely on more sustainable energy sources like solar. I have wanted to switch to solar for my personal usage for a long time, but have been unable to do so because I live in an apartment and cannot install my own panels. So I am very excited about the shared solar project. The reduced energy bills and increased tax revenue will also be benefits to the community. Some community members have spoken here tonight about finding alternative locations for solar panels, but every location will have upsides and downsides, and the Forth and Gay property owners have taken care to minimize the downsides at their location. Given the urgency of climate change and the great care that has already been given to develop the plan at the Forth and Gay property, I urge your support of the special use permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Nathan Myers, then after Nathan Lee Visnesky.
Hello. My name is Nathan Myers. I'm at 850 Plantation Road. I support solar as an alternative energy source for a more sustainable future. Moving towards this sustainable future and mitigating the, mitigating the effects of climate change will require rapidly developing alternative energy sources. Shared solar opens up the possibility of solar energy to residents that are otherwise unable to install their own panels, such as apartment dwellers like myself. It also centralizes maintenance and upkeep, removing that responsibility from individuals. With this in mind, I encourage your support for the special use permit for the Father and Gay solar project. Thank you.
Lee Visnesky?
Visnesky.
Visnesky. Sorry about that. And then after him, Bill Baker, and I might not be able to read that handwriting.
Hi. I'm Lee Visnesky, 4121 Fort Vosch Drive, lifetime resident in Shawsville. I'm a big-picture guy. It doesn't make sense to me that I pay taxes so Pivot Energy can make money. That solar system will not generate its own revenue. There's only going to be a few hundred people at best, I believe is what Buzz said earlier in one of these meetings, that will be assisted by a potentially lower electric bill of $12. I think maybe turn off the basement light for a couple months and you'll get your $12 back, but that's just me. I absolutely believe in Pivot's, you know, right to pursue a capitalist, you know, way, way of generating revenue for themselves, but they're not. They're, they're getting this from the tax dollars, so they're really, it's shuffling the same money around. It's my money, it's your money that we pay into the taxes. It's, they're not making money. They're taking tax, you know, federal tax revenue and giving it away, which I, I don't, I don't agree with that. The other thing is, is that, Ms. Dabney, if you and your family, you know, if this solar doesn't go through, I also absolutely believe in your rights as a property owner more than anything. I spent 23 years in the military fighting for that right, and I absolutely want you to have it. But that community, Ellen Ryan and Jimmy Peirman, are just, you know, the people that you would go to first. If you need community help, I will give you my number. You call me up, and I'll come down there and do whatever I can to help. And I think the eastern Montgomery community, if, if Father and Gay needs help, the people of that community will give it, and I don't think it needs to come from here, and I don't think it needs to come from Pivot. I think we can take care of our own, just like we've always done. And that's really all I have to say. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bill Baker.
Hello, board, and everyone else in the audience. I really appreciate what everyone has had to say, and I fully understand everyone's viewpoint. However, I think we, the earth has a problem, and the problem has started in the beginning of the Industrial Revolution, and we have sent up greenhouse gases that have caused the earth to warm. And this is affecting not only everyone in the room, everyone in the globe, on the globe, and differs from area to area. It most oftenly affects the poorer people. And we must, we must decrease and curb our use of fossil fuels, and renewables are the way to go. I think the aspect of the view has been a bit overstated. I remember three decades ago when the cellular towers went up. I was upset, I was angry, and I don't think there's anyone in this room that would want all the cell towers turned, taken down now. We love our cellular phone. So I, I am for the, the proposal by Pivot, even irregardless of the pollinated gardens and sheep grazing. I think it's the right thing to do if we care about our children, if we care about our grandchildren, and if we care about future generations to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir? Can you repeat your, yes, can you repeat your name and address? I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry about that. Bill Baker, 2121 Blue Jay Lane.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
That concludes the sign-up sheet, but if there is any citizen that would like to speak... Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was public address. I have public address. Am I right? Only one sheet? Okay. That's all right. That concludes the sign-up sheet for the public hearing. That concludes the sign-up sheet for the public hearing. But if there's any other citizen that would like to come forward to speak on this public hearing, you have four minutes to address the board. If you'll state your name and address.
My name is Beth Umberger. I live at 915 College Street, Christiansburg, Virginia. I really, I support the idea. This looks like it's well thought out. Topsoil is developed by our native plants. Native plants have very deep roots, unlike our lawns, which have shallow roots. And if this is left to grow in native plants for 30 years, the topsoil will, will be improved by that. Also, talking about pollinators. Native plants are pollinated by native insects mostly. And the native insects are bees, wasps, beetles, flies. Birds are also pollinators, the hummingbirds, and moss and butterflies. The, you do not need honeybees. They are not, they're not native to our country. The things that we talk about in those native plant gardens, when they talk about pollinators, they mean native insects that visit these plants, not non-native insects. I have been very concerned about the loss of farmland. I have seen it being lost to Calery pear, Russian olive, Asiatic bittersweet. It's autumn olive, not Russian olive. Privet, burning bush. Many of these are sold by the horticulture industry. The, the land between Blacksburg and Christiansburg used to be farmland. It is now, we've lost it to shopping centers, development. In Blacksburg, I used to be as a child, I could hear Bob White's in, near the golf course at Tech, where I grew up first five years of my life on a farm at Tech, and that is now an airport. We've lost a lot of land to Calery pear. If you look between Blacksburg and Christiansburg, and that will be really difficult to, to eradicate. And it will have to be done eventually if we want farmland and if we want our forest lands to be healthy. This, this, the grazing of the sheep will keep that land from getting these invasives in it. And it would be, it will, it will stay farmland. I, like everybody else, I love driving through there, driven through there my entire life, and it is a beauty to behold. These 50-foot buffers, we're losing 40% of our insects and 40% of our birds. These 20, 15-foot buffers are okay, but these 50-foot buffers support a lot of our native birds and insects. And those, and they will also be of visual interest. We also have ugly electrical lines along there, but we are all used to those. We don't think anything about them. Farmers were some of the first people to support electrical, electricity. And there are still electric companies in Virginia owned by farmers. And so they, I think, my father was a farmer, he taught farmers at Virginia Tech. I really believe that this would be something that he would see as something that would be a good use. And you're trying to make money on a farm. So this is a way that a farm, they're gonna have to innovate. Farmers are doing other things to innovate to make a, a land functional. So I'm really in support of this project. We have a global warming, and this, even if it's subsidized by the government, it reduces that temperature and makes it all, also healthier, the land healthier. It will help us not have to deal with huge amounts of, of the changes that we're having in our weather now and, and our, our overall health. So I hope you vote for this.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else like to speak at this public hearing?
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity. My name is Kenny Ford, and I live at 4891 Callaway Street, Elliston, Virginia. I am here tonight to speak in opposition of this solar panels. That's a beautiful drive down through there. I picked up hay there years ago, and it's just a beautiful drive. And I just think the solar panels is gonna be a disruption and a destruction and a distraction to that area. I could go on, but I can only echo what Ellen and the rest of them have already said in opposition to this solar panels. So I was, hope that you would vote no on this, on the solar panels. One other thing off the beaten path is, thank you for all you all have done for EMS service in the Eastern Montgomery County. Just keep up the good work, and thank you. I've gotta go home and watch your hokeys. Have a good evening.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Ron Myers. I live at 201 Valley Roller Mill Road, Newcastle. It was a long drive. I'm gonna miss most of that game. But I wanted to speak tonight after I've been invited into this great community. And I've seen a lot of challenges about this project. So I'm not here to speak for or against it, but to say that what I've observed is a lot of, in, in my opinion, almost needless conflict and difficulties and a whole bunch of work, I know, for all of you commissioners, supervisors. So thank you for the work that we've done a little bit on the project and to the community for inviting me in. And I'm speaking in favor of a solar ordinance to be developed in collaboration with the community and developers. We stand ready to work with you, and we'd certainly like to support your efforts. I think that we could become a really model ordinance for the state and actually the nation. We've been working on this full-time for six years and hoping for the opportunity to collaborate with local governments. So we stand ready to do that. So that's my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Hi, my name's Crystal Mello. I live up Poplar Hollow Road in Shawsville. So when I listen to, I, I think it's just being confused how this didn't pass the General Assembly, how this can even be a thing, and why we're here right now, missing the lady hokeys. But when I listened to the General Assembly, APCO voiced opposition to this project. And I realize it's, part of this is that utilities don't like shared solar because it democratizes energy. So yeah, I, like, I do, I love everything Buzz says about this project. And, and the, the moves they've made when they've heard the people speak, probably would like vegetables or some kind of school program, managing a garden under the solar panels versus sheep. But with all that, I still don't understand how this can go forward if it hasn't even passed, if APCO's not even for it. Those are the things that, like, I'm listening to. Yeah, and I, I appreciate y'alls, a lot of work in listening in on this. But I would say also probably please to oppose it because I feel like there's too much what-ifs and a whole lot of confusion about it. And if there really was, like Ron Myers, some kind of... I realize this is the future. Been fighting the Mountain Valley Pipeline now for many years. Like, so I wanna get rid of fossil fuels, I, wholeheartedly. It's coming under the Roanoke River when we talk about this. That project is directly affecting the Roanoke River. This is not. But there's so much confusion for so many people, even me, who works for Power Coalition, who, who does this type of stuff. So I, I am asking to, to not approve it. But with maybe getting with Ron and let's really see what this looks like for our future because we do need to do something more sustainable and better for everybody. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone else like to come forward on this public hearing?
Hi, my name is Nicola Hill. I'm at 50 Katy Lane in Christiansburg. And I'm just here tonight in support of the shared solar project. I, I don't think that we should let perfect be the enemy of good, and I do think that this project will be a net good for our community. And I hope the board that will, I hope the board will pass this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward to speak on this matter for this public hearing? Seeing no one come forward, we will close the public hearing. There will be no action on the board tonight on this matter. So we will not vote on this, tonight, on this public hearing. And at this time, we are gonna take a 10-minute recess. Hours to see the hokeys, okay. Hours to see the hokeys, okay? Address. The Board of Supervisors allows citizens to present comments on issues deserving of their attention during public address at each meeting. There was a sign-up sheet out front. I will call the names on the sign-up sheet first, and then after that concludes, anyone else that would like to come forward, they may speak. Each speaker will have four minutes, whether speaking as an individual or a representative. All comments must be directed to the chair or other supervisors from the speaker's lectern at the front of the room. Please begin by saying your name and address. Debate between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Speakers may leave any written statements or comments to supervisors with the board clerk. Speakers will be judged out of order should the speaker engage in any personal attacks, use of profanity, or abuse of language, or debate with the audience, and not address the supervisors. First on the list was Mr. Kenny Ford, but I think he's watching the hokeys play right now. And then I have Danny Reed.
Is this in regards to the Love Truck Stop?
It's public address. Anything you'd like to speak on the board for?
My name is Danny Reed, and I reside at 1756 Peddler Road. And this is in regards to the Love Truck Stop. And I'm asking you guys if you'd consider voting no. I have several issues. One would be the congestion of the interstate bridge there and exits. Peddler Road, Peddler Road and Park and Ride intersects Norfolk, and I don't know if there's a plan. If you're on Peddler Road and you look up toward the Lancher Truck Stop, there is inadequate sight distance coming over that bridge right now. And I don't know if they've even considered that, and this is going to make that condition worse. So all the congestion of trying to get out of Peddler, Park and Ride, school bus trying to get out on Norfolk, things like that, with all this thousand trucks a day coming in and out of that exit. Other things is that 190-foot sign that we had talked about. I don't know if too many places in Montgomery County has a 190-foot sign, and that's going to be towering over our church properties. And my question is, is that necessary to have that large? And other issues would be, they're talking about taking up farmland. That's prime bottom land right there, and you're taking up about 17 acres of prime bottom land. So you're talking about conservation. And the Peddler Hills Nature Conservancy or Conservation is adjacent to this property that wraps around this proposal, Truck Stop, at the 33 acres. And that houses a lot of endangered species. And so I don't know if that's been considered. And also, the floodplain issue. They say, well, they park trucks in the floodplain, but you park them in the floodplain, but they drip oil and things like that, and if a flood comes up, all that goes out into the watershed. That goes into the Roanoke River. So those are some of the issues that we'd have, not to mention the impact it's going to have on our congregation, our church. Okay? And I'd appreciate you, if you'd vote no, I'd appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the list, but if any citizen would like to come forward, they'll have four minutes to address the board. You'll need to state your name and your address.
Good evening, Board. Thank you very much for having me speak tonight. My name is Bob Burel, live at 1200 Flint Drive here in Christiansburg. I'd like to start off by talking about money. You know, I usually talk about money quite often. But we all have a working wage, and we get taxed by the Fed and by state government. Then those taxes ours we have left, we have to pay property taxes on said property that we've already paid a sales tax on. So please think about when you're going to raise our taxes and spend our money foolishly. You know, our constitution was based on self-governance, and it's local first and Fed last. That means we take care of our neighbors, and we spend the money here at home and not all over the place. You know, I believe, isn't it the Board Supervisor's job to be frugal with taxpayer money? It's your guys' job to be frugal with taxpayer money. You know, I understand that the property assessment of 70 cents is a neutral rate. That means no tax increase. 73 cents is a level of tax assessment, or 3 cents means it would bring in $4 million of new tax money. You know, also, I guess about a month ago, there's been a lot of discussions about Christiansburg and SROs. Who's paying for the SROs in schools that town Christiansburg? What I hear you guys say is you prefer to hire additional police officers and buy additional equipment versus utilizing the resources already in place. Say again, you guys want to prefer to hire additional police officers and buy additional equipment versus utilizing resources already in place? That means estimated costs of $750 to $1 million in additional costs to this county and taxpayers. So my question is, when is the Board Supervisor going to meet with Christiansburg to come up with a solution that doesn't cost so much? Last time I looked, police officers do not work for free. Their benefits cost money, cars, insurance, health care, all these things cost money. Nothing is free. This decision will impact our budget and our taxes. I've had conversations with a wide variety of people and neighbors, and their response has been consistent. Why doesn't the Board of Supervisors use common sense in deciding how to spend this money? Isn't it, okay? So now, this past summer, the school board said they had to pay so much more to get a superintendent because there were so few candidates. The school board hired an outside firm that costs thousands more dollars than using the Virginia Department of Education. So please ask, when you talk to, please ask the school board, how many potential candidates apply for this position? I hear it's a great number, yet they had to hire someone who specializes in bringing in unions. You know, they have a new budget request, and they want 11 new employees, two new school counselors, elementary school counselors. So why do eight-year-olds need counselors? What decisions did the school board make in order to place harm on children so they have to have new counselors for eight-year-olds? I don't understand. They want to hire, I want eight, four extra positions that were supposed to be one time only. The Fed paid for these positions. COVID is over. Why does MCPS need to keep the staff? It's $250,000. They want a 5% pay raise, a pay raise for the eighth consecutive year while continued declining grades, something that adds up. After COVID, 250 students left MCPS. MCPS was held harmless and didn't lose a dime of state or local money. Over 800 students in Montgomery County are homeschooled, 2,000 kids are private school. Why so many? You know, we've been asking for a town hall-style meeting. You guys need, shouldn't be scared. You guys need to ask for that, because the truth reveals moral lies. Hold a joint town hall meeting so the county can know the truth. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come forward to address the board? You have four minutes to do so.
Good evening, Board. I am Joanne Price, and I live in Blacksburg. And I'm here today to ask you to consider an ordinance that will put it out to, put guidelines as to whether or not this school board or school system should have a union, and what the guidelines would be. Unions are not supposed to be involved with schools politically. However, there is a loophole with collective bargaining, and that loophole, through collective bargaining, the MCA will actually act as a union. Most parents are against a union in Montgomery County Public Schools. We have had, for the last almost two years, we've been coming here and talking to you about the push to organize teachers in Montgomery County. Now, the push has really been on since we hired a teacher from a union state, New Jersey. He was hired to bring in the union. We have three school board members who are not running for reelection, so they will not be here to ride out the consequences of their decisions. So what I'm saying is, they are wanting to vote on a resolution. A resolution is allowed by law in the absence of an ordinance. So what I'm asking you to do is take consideration for an ordinance, and then we will decide whether or not we, the people, will have a union or not. We don't know the full ramifications of the costs. Every state that's had a union, you can look at the tax rates. That's why everybody's moving out of New Jersey, California. Those are our union states. The Teachers Union in New Jersey bankrupted the state, and everybody knows the story about Chris Christie and how the union came against Chris Christie. So politicizing our schools is not what we want to do as people in Montgomery County. So today and tonight, I'm asking you to consider an ordinance. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to come forward to address the board? Seeing no one come forward, we will close public address. Do I have a motion to move into work session?
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. This is a work session for Montgomery County Public Schools. Do I have any discussion? Madam Clerk, you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motts?
Aye.
Ms. Bowe?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Jaskowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Spitz?
Aye.
Chairwoman Evans?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Board members, I believe Angie has some information to share with the group this evening.
I don't know if the schools want to present something to you first, or if you just want me to give our update from Courtney Rogers.
Good evening, Dr. Bregan. Dr. Whitaker.
Evening. Thank you for inviting us here. Dr. Whitaker is going to share a little information regarding a grant to possibly get some significant funds for our capital projects that we wanted to share with the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. So you have before you a letter from Dr. Bregan, and that letter is in regard to what's called the School Construction Assistance Program. It is a grant that we became aware of at the end of last month, and that is available through the state of Virginia. And so the way that the grant works is, there's a scoring criteria, and for each of the different elements of the scoring criteria, school divisions can get certain points. And so we are, once we go through all of the criteria, all of the points that are available and possible for us, we are at 62 of 65 needed points to apply for the grant. We qualify for the kind of middle level of the grant, which would be up to 20% of a $100 million project, so up to $20 million of funding is what we could apply for if we were to qualify. Again, we're at 62 points of 65 points. We did work with Ms. Hill to see, was there anything else we could do? If we recalculated some of the numbers, because the time of when they pulled those calculations was right last year when you all issued the bond, but the calculation still remained the same. So we really are at that stock 62 out of 65 points, and so we're coming forward tonight. The request is a requirement of the grant to get those points, is to get a commitment from the Board of Supervisors to the same percentage of your funding moving forward through the end of that grant funding, so through the next 20 years. And so again, that's a percentage, not a dollar amount. And Ms. Hill and I, you know, looked at that together, shared that information with her, but felt that we should bring that forward to you.
Thank you. Do you want Angie to go forward, or do the board members have questions? Okay, all right. Ms. Hill?
We passed around an email that Courtney Rogers sent to me late today, and just to summarize what it said, I spoke with him earlier, and we talked about the project, and he's aware of the program. They have other clients that are utilizing the program. He has two concerns related to the board providing this commitment. The first one would be related to if a future board was financially unable or just chose not to honor the commitment of the percentage of funding. That would fall under our management review that the bond rating agencies look at, the financial policy guidelines. It would show that we were not abiding by a board-adopted guideline, and that would not look well from the rating agencies. And the second item would be that it would be a credit weakness, because it would limit our flexibility to be able to do different things with our funding, and if there was a funding downturn, if we had less growth in the future, or that kind of thing, that we were not able to fund the schools at that level, that would be a problem as well. Dr. Whitaker and I looked at the percentages, and Mark McGruder helped us look at those as well. If they had asked for a level-dollar amount of funding, we felt like that would not be a problem, that we don't feel like the Board of Supervisors would reduce the schools' funding from year to year. You certainly could, but that has not been your practice, as far as I know, ever. The percentages are close. You do provide about the same percentage of funding, but it's the undesignated revenue that we're looking at. So it's the percentage of funding that we give the schools compared to our total undesignated revenue. And while the schools get about 44% of their revenue from our transfer, that holds steady. It's held steady for about 10 years. Our undesignated revenue with our growth fluctuates more than that per year, and oftentimes, that's the way that the county is able to enter into new initiatives and that type of thing, because that is, as you know, our limited source of revenue that we have control over. So that was part of the issues that we looked at, to make sure that it wasn't something that we could recommend for the board.
And I want to reiterate, the issue is not the dollar amount, it's the percentage.
That's right. And we ran numbers on that, too. It runs from 59 to 61% over the past five years. And as I said, the funding that the county provides as a percentage of the school's total budget is right on 44% every year, but the amount that is compared to our undesignated revenue does fluctuate slightly. And then, this might be a little bit confusing, because we talk often about how the schools are 70% of our budget. That's because if you look at our entire budget, with all of the funds and the total school fund... That's because if you look at our entire budget with all of the funds and the total school funds, they make up 70% of the grand total of the budget.
Ms. Hill, am I to understand that even though we've already given a $90 million commitment with the bond, that did not play a factor?
I, Dr. Whitaker had emailed back and forth with the state representative from the Department of Education. And I emailed him and, and said, our Board of Supervisors has a strong financial commitment. They issued $90 million worth of bonds through the Virginia Public School Authority in April of 2022. It's going to be paid back over a 20-year period. Does this not demonstrate financial commitment? And he said, pretty much no. It doesn't meet the letter of their scoring rubric. And it, and no, it didn't. You had to do the letter that was a percentage of revenue.
Okay, I'll open up the floor for discussion or questions. Any supervisors have questions? Supervisor Fitchakowski?
How much money is available on this program?
So for us, it would be up to 20.
A total for the whole state?
Oh, I believe it's $200 million. Is that correct, Jonathan?
For 100 different?
I'll have Jonathan pull that up.
I think that's what I read, too.
Yeah. I'll have him double check that number. But yeah, you qualify into different categories. There's three categories. We would fall into the middle category. So the top category qualifies for up to 30% of funding. We fall into the second category. We would qualify for up to 20%. And then the bottom category is up to 10%. Thank you. Thank you, Jonathan. He said 450 million.
Any other questions? Supervisor Bowe?
If this was approved, would you get your 65 points?
We would.
Would you get more than 65 points?
We would. We would get, I believe it's 10 points that we would get for this category. But it would allow us to fall within the points that we would need to apply.
Is there anything else that would get you the three extra points?
No, we've checked every way that we can. I've worked with Ms. Hill. We, we called them. We did recalculations. There, there's no other way to get the other points, unfortunately.
Ms. Hill, did Courtney say this would lower our credit rating, or it just puts us at risk?
It puts us at risk. It would not immediately lower our rating. It does put us at risk.
Has it, for any other counties in the state, lowered their credit rating?
This is a brand new program. It's been out, as Dr. Whitaker said, for about a month. And it has to be filed by the end of the week. So it's a very tight turnaround. My opinion is that you had to be set, completely set up for this to work before the program came out because of the strict criteria. And Courtney did say that localities that are more distressed than we are, that can get more point, more points for that, are meeting the program more easily. So I'm not certain that anyone that he's aware of has to meet this criteria. And you know, some localities have revenue sharing agreements. That would qualify.
So you talked about the two buckets of money. Pardon me, because I'm not going to get it right. There's one that, you know, we pretty much stay on the 40% or whatever that is, right? Year after year after year. That's not what Courtney is really concerned about. He's concerned about the undesignated money.
That's what the grant, or I don't, is it a grant? The grant requires?
It's called a program, yes, School Assistance.
Okay. The program requires us to say that we will, that, for the board to say that you will maintain the ratio of funding for local education to total revenue of the county. So that's the ratio that doesn't work. That's the one that fluctuates up and down a little bit.
Specifically for undesignated money or for both groups of money?
It's undesignated. We, that's what he told us. We asked him that specifically.
So how much undesignated money do we typically have every year?
We're projecting in '24, 138 million. Last year it was 127 million.
And what's the percentage this year of undesignated?
20, in '24 what we're proposing, or in '23?
Is it based off of '23 or '24?
It would be based upon this year's funding. It would have to stay the same as this year.
23, yes. That's 44.2%.
How, how many dollars is that?
Oh, 76 mil, 76.1 million.
And if we reduced it 1%, that would be a million? No.
I can't do that in my head.
1%, you move the decimal point twice. So it would be 76,000?
I don't think the math works like that. If, because we are proposing proposing to give the schools $4 million more in fiscal year '24. And our undesignated revenue went up, even though we're proposing to give them $4 million more, the percentage goes from 44.2 to 43.9%. That all rounds to 44, but I don't feel comfortable, but that's okay.
And how many millions of dollars is that? Would it be year to year?
I'm sorry, the percentage that we need to look at goes from 59.8 to 58.95. That was, I told you the wrong percentage a minute ago.
How many dollars is that if we kept it the same versus doing what you recommend for this next year?
We would have to give them, instead of $4 million, what, we would have to give them 5,165.
That's a lot of money. That's your $20 million over 20 years. It's actually more. We're actually, if you got this grant, you'd be getting lot, wow.
You would have to maintain that.
Right. If we kept funding consistent. You would get more from us than $20 million. But we don't do that.
Well, and the 20 million is just for construction.
No, I understand.
But you're saying the amount that the Board would provide to the schools for operating would be more than the amount of the program?
That's right.
That's right. Even if everything stayed just like it is today, since it's a million, almost two more over 20 years, that's more than 20 million.
For sure.
Anyone? Supervisor Shepherd? Supervisor King?
So they, they're wanting to know the budget now, not what we're working on, but what we?
That's right. You have to start with the year that we're in right now, fiscal year '23, yes.
And if we do this, if we do this, it's going to take away from our borrowing power if something happens. They're going to say, well, you guaranteed this, so you got to take that off your credit rate.
It actually, it actually sets up a financial policy.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
That if you vary in the future from that, will probably ding you when you're looking at issuing debt with your credit.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So we'd have to guarantee $20 million.
You'd have to assure them that for that 20-year period, you're not going to vary from that policy.
So if something happens down the road, that takes away from our credit ability.
It very well could. It could. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Dr. Bregan, can you, and I know you're bidding out, can you give us the latest estimate on Christiansburg High School renovations?
The last estimate that we brought forward to you was 116 million. We are still continuing to work on that. As, as we, as you remember, we brought to you last time that we separated contract and are moving forward with bidding that project once it's done. But the last estimate we had was 116 million.
And that was?
That should go out for bid in May.
Okay.
And those numbers were January. It was either the very end of December, beginning of January.
And that, and if I recall, that's with cutting about 40,000 square foot. Is that correct? But the population was still a count of, what does, what was the capacity?
1,600.
1,600. And right now, what is the high school capacity at?
I'm so sorry. I should know that off the top of my head. I want to say it's right under 12. Yeah.
It's under, under 12? And the capacity, and what is the capacity right now at that high school? What is the, I'm sorry, the capacity is 1,200. How many students do you have?
Gosh, I should know that off the top of my head. I apologize. I don't know that number off the top of my head.
Okay. So the capacity is 1,200. This renovation's for 116 million dollars bid out preliminary would accommodate for 1,600.
Yes, ma'am.
May I ask another question? Is there any chance that you can put solar on the roof down in Shawsville and actually make money for the schools?
So, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, we, it's funny you mentioned Supervisor Bowe. We were talking about that earlier. And where I came from, and I did come from New Jersey, albeit not for some of the reasons people said earlier. But nonetheless, I'm a proud citizen of the Commonwealth now. We had solar in a lot of our schools. And almost anytime we would do a roof renovation, a roof improvement, you know, the roofs typically last about 20 years. We would tie solar into that because then you get that capacity to generate energy virtually for free, depending on if you have a power purchase agreement or how you set up that payment plan. We would definitely, we were just talking about taking a look at that. We actually, we met, met via Zoom with a contractor a little while ago to get some ideas of what would be our possible projects. We haven't gotten that information yet. We haven't shared it with our school board. But we would definitely look at that.
Is there anything from the Board of Supervisors that would prevent them from exploring solar on their roofs or their property?
Okay, thank you.
There may be some requirements with the town of Christiansburg. Yeah.
I share Biggs?
Okay, so I guess what I'm looking, I'm looking at two things here. Because you know, more than anything, I want Christiansburg High School to happen. And I think way back when we were borrowing money, I wanted to borrow more money than we borrowed because I was not sure what was going to happen. But what concerns me is, I was on the board when we hired the financial planners or when we hired our financial advisors. We didn't have any when I first came on the board. And my whole tenure on the board, they have always advised as well. And what really concerns me are these two comments here. In the second paragraph where it says, our concern, first sentence, our concern would be if the Board of Supervisors would agree to this commitment and then at a later date, either not be able to financially or just choose to not abide by this commitment. I see, I wouldn't really be concerned as much about the commitment, but there could be a, a time when maybe financially we couldn't honor that commitment. Maybe something happens. Maybe another roof falls in somewhere. That concerns me. And then in the third paragraph, the very last sentence, when they're talking about, in other words, this commitment would be a financial constraint and take away some of the board's budgetary flexibility. Those two statements concern me because of the respect I have for the firm. And I guess what I'm looking for, since I am not a financial expert, I'm looking to our staff for an opinion or for some guidance about this. And I'm getting the impression that maybe from reading this and hearing some comments, maybe this would be something that would not be something that we should do, even though in my heart, I want to do it. So can you help?
You, you are correct. It is a difficult situation. We all know that the schools need this. And when we talked about it, that's, we worked really hard to try to get it to work. I don't feel like it's in the best interest. In my professional opinion, it's not in the best interest of the county to do this because of the constraint that it puts on us. And it locks us into something that's really hard to maintain. In good years, it would be fine and easy. In hard years, I don't, it would be hard to do. And then you would have to make a different hard choice. And I know that you don't want to set yourselves up for something that would be hard to sustain.
I think, I think this is a perfect example of the fact that we're at our credit limit. It limits the decisions that we can make as well as the credit score that we can have. So it's just, you know, I'm with you, Ms. Biggs. I'd like to support this, too, but I don't think we should do it because we're not in a, we're, we manage our county well. You know, we're doing well right now, but that doesn't mean 10 years from now we can continue to do that for $20 million today.
We always try to give you financially sound advice. And in this case, it is not financially sound to move forward with this at this time.
It just creates a situation for a future board that if circumstances change, you've made a commitment through this, and then that board at some point would have to make a different decision. And that's where, you know, I can't sit here and say the rating agencies would say, oh, no, that's, we don't know. We don't know what the circumstances of that debt issue would be whenever that debt issue is before them. But it certainly is a precedent that I think would, could very well potentially create a challenge down the road for you, for our future board. And I hate it because it turned, it was like.
I'll tell you, when I read that email, it was one of those things that was so exciting and then so crushing at the same time. Because you get really excited. And then I called Angie and I'm like, this is so great, but I don't know that, if there's a way. But you know, our job is to bring the information to the board, to who we are, you know, entitled to bring things to. And it wouldn't have been appropriate not to bring the information forward.
And my first impression was that it was level funding, that we would commit to the funding level. And I knew that you would be comfortable with that. We would be comfortable with that. But when it said, when it said the percentage of revenue, that is a hard thing to swallow.
And then you specifically asked again and got that answered. And it was like.
I just want to say a thank you to Mr. Meadows and Ms. Hill for all the work you did with us trying to figure this out and really trying to make it work. As I sit here and we advocated for asking for this because it was a significant amount of money, I'm thinking I wouldn't do it either, so. I, I get it otherwise, but you know, we advocated because we thought we had a possibility to, to pull it off and make it work for, for everyone, for the Board of Supervisors and for us. So I appreciate all your efforts. And we have to go with what the financial experts tell us is in our best interest collectively.
I'm really grateful that you guys, it sounds like you're shaking as many trees as you can. And that's all we can ask you guys to do.
Yes, we do appreciate you finding out about this possible grant. But just as this email says, it's not, it will not be, we would leverage our ability and especially over the time. And, and I know, I hate it for Christiansburg High School. And I, and again, we're thinking that, you know, 116 million is what it's now. And we're not sure once it bids out, if that will be the number, the final number or not. So it is very, very sad for Christiansburg that we can't get this money. But at this point, we're not willing to leverage and, and take on that responsibility. And even for future boards, like you said, what if they're not financially, what do we have, a pandemic? That's the bad word. A pandemic or something, or recession or anything like that to happen. And we would be committed not being able to move forward with that percentage or an increase for that, so. Any further discussion?
Just if you find anything else that we can look at, please bring it.
I'm tempted to turn in the application anyways and just.
If you're that close, I mean.
Let them score and, you know, see where we land. You know, I don't know if you all know Dr. Schultz, but he's an amazing grant writer and we're very fortunate to have him. So, you know, we will always look for every dollar that we can find and, and try to do everything we can to secure them.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to come out of close? To have a motion to come out of closed, I'm sorry, work session.
Motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, addendum.
No addendum this evening, Madam Chair.
Good. Items of consent, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Onto old business. Rezoning Loves Truck Stop, Ms. Hopkins?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, since the last meeting, we had had a few questions from board members that staff has attempted to address. As a reminder, the application components, there's a rezoning of thirty-two point nine six three acres from A1 to general business. Then they have requested a special use permit to allow a travel center in that general business zoning district, and then a separate special use permit for their comprehensive sign plan, that is to allow a high-rise sign exceeding forty feet and five hundred square feet in the area, and then to allow additional signage over the allowed number of signs and to exceed maximum allowed square footage of the total signage on the project site. So, additional information was requested by some board members regarding the sales or tax revenue that would be generated from the site, and then regarding the high-rise sign, alternative locations, alternative heights, and the benefit or justification for the high-rise sign. So, Ms. Hill forwarded an email per Loves representative. They have stated their initial investment is around fifteen to seventeen million dollars, plus the fixtures and equipment. Their sales, store sales are generated two point five million, restaurant one point eight, and the Speedco shop at six million. With that, the estimated annual tax collections would be about three hundred and fifty thousand. So, we gave all those numbers to Mark, who is a money guru, and he was able to calculate all that for us. In addition, Loves does anticipate to provide at least fifty to sixty new jobs in this, at this location. And then as far as the sign, they studied three locations with the balloon, that's the little yellow dots here. They actually flew a blimp and then determined where they could see it from, and it sounds like they flew that at about a hundred and eighty to a hundred and ninety feet. They determined that the hundred and ninety feet at the rear location, which is this bottom one here, was the more visible. So, at that, northbound traffic will have a read on the sign from zero point five to zero point three bound, miles from the exit, and you can kind of see that here at zero point five. And then southbound will have a read at one point five miles, which is this, and then just before the exit at point one mile. So, Loves stores that are lower performing are typically the ones that do not have a high-rise sign or where it has limited visibility. So, one of the examples they gave is a tornado come through Oklahoma City, and that's a little flatter than it is here probably. It was an existing store near an amusement park, and once they lost the high-rise sign, the sales dropped thirty percent immediately. Once they repaired the sign and had it back up, they immediately saw those sales go back up to the standard level. So, they have stated without a high-rise sign nor the option for a billboard in this area, they may not be able to proceed with construction at this location. With that, I will take any questions you have for me. The applicants are here, and they can answer any additional questions as well.
Okay, we'll go around the room, I'll start off with Supervisor Demots.
I don't have any additional questions, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
It just so happens that I was riding the Smartway bus home last night, and it was dark around exit one twenty-eight, and so that Loves sign at a hundred and ninety feet would definitely be visible because it is black. But with regards to billboards, there's billboards in Salem that they can purchase or rent, and then there's a Cracker Barrel billboard above the Exxon at one twenty-eight on the right. It's hard to see, it's not really the best location. So, hopefully, if this passes, they have the opportunity to use those billboards. I do have a question about the three hundred and fifty thousand in tax revenue. I know that sales tax goes to the state before it comes to us, is this three hundred and fifty?
The share we would get, the total, it's property taxes and the sales and meals taxes, and yes, that's right. And it's the share we would get, the total we would get.
Does it take out the cigarette tax because we're already counting cigarette tax, or is this above?
No, we were not projecting this in our estimate, so we did include it here.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any questions.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
No questions, but I think they've, I think they've done a good job in laying this whole location out, and I think it's a good economic development opportunity, that's all I got.
Supervisor King?
Don't have no question, but our ordinance says one at a hundred and eighty foot, is that correct?
Our ordinance for a high-rise sign is only forty feet in height is the maximum, unless they request the special, that's why we put in the provision for the special use permit, is because we recognized that not all locations, even at forty feet, would a high-rise sign be viable, that they may have to go higher than that.
I know, last time you was here, and I looked at this again, they didn't like none of our signed ordinance, is that correct? When I say that, they wanted to change them all?
They are requesting a special use permit for essentially most signs, yes.
We have an ordinance for a reason, thank you.
Vice Chair Biggs?
I don't have any questions, I just have a comment, and that would be if this passes tonight, I would hope that Loves would work with the church in any way they could as far as the concerns they had about, you know, the fence and then the trees and whatever else they could do.
Yes, ma'am, it should be noted, they did submit the new concept plan too, I believe that was in your packet, I failed to put it up here on the PowerPoint, but it does show the Leland Cypress to be located behind the fence. So, that plan, we did change the ordinance to revise the date and everything and reference that plan.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And Ms. Hopkins, just for clarification, so you're saying that without the high-rise sign, they will probably, even if we voted to pass, they would probably not move forward with this project?
That has been their indication to me, that they likely would not be able to proceed with this location due to the lack of visibility.
And you just stated that the new plans do have the Leland Cypress trees or something for blockage and helping with the neighboring church?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, very good. Any other comments? I do think that they have done a great job of laying this all out, and it is needed for all the truck traffic, if you've ever been on Interstate eighty-one, you see trucks pulled off illegally on the side of the road just because they have to stop and rest, and this will accommodate and help that.
I also wanted to say that it reminded me of a proposed SUP or change on Clay Street. Clay Street, when I first got on the board five years ago, this board chose to pass it even though all the residents didn't want it there because it was just the right location to put more multifamily housing. And we passed the ordinance to allow travel centers within a quarter mile of interstate exchanges, and if this doesn't go there, why did we even change that ordinance? Because really, we have no other places in our county to put any of these types of travel centers. So, I'd like to make sure that, you know, when we do pass ordinances, I think we specifically talked about this location or something. Yeah.
All right. Ms. Ma'am? Okay. All right, no further discussion? Madam Clerk, well, I guess, no, I'm sorry, that was just presentation, let's start off with the first one. The first one, to have a motion for the rezoning of Loves Truck Stop.
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
So, to clarify, that was to rezone it to, from agricultural to the business. And the second, is the special use permit for Loves Travel Center? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
The next, special use permit comprehensive sign plan, Loves Travel Center, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion in a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Motz?
Aye.
Ms. Bone?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
No.
Mr. King?
No.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Fidzikowski?
Aye.
Chair Blevins?
Aye.
Five ayes, two no.
Reports, county attorney.
No report.
County administrator.
Couple items, first off, spent a couple of days in North Carolina at the end of the week, and they're about a month ahead of us, so my allergies are in full bloom now. I did want to report on a couple of meetings, Angie and I and our economic development staff met with the Director of External Affairs with VEDP last Tuesday morning, and then Brian Hamilton and I, along with other NRV economic development folks, met with Jason Elkubi, the VEDP CEO, for lunch last week. That was a great discussion about our region and how the VEDP can assist us with various projects and activities. Next Wednesday, on April fifth, I'll have the opportunity to meet with the new State Community College Chancellor, NRCC President Hubers invited several of us over to a meeting at New River Community College, so I look forward to sharing the successes that NRCC has provided in our region. And the last thing I want to mention is, we would like to ask the board to consider a work session after the PSA meeting next Monday night, I think there's a PSA meeting scheduled for six thirty. We would like for the board to consider a work session at seven o'clock that evening. That would allow us time to give the board an update on the county's five-year CIP. We have not done that yet as part of the budget process, and then we could also discuss any other budget questions that may be out there at that time. But just looking for consensus, if you'd be willing to meet at seven o'clock next Monday night after the...
We got, I can't see thumbs, we're good? Okay.
I won't be there because I'm having a medical procedure the next day.
We'll be sure to fill you in. That's all I have, Madam Chair, thank you.
Very good. Supervisor Demots?
No report.
Supervisor Bone?
Hoagies are ahead at halftime.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No report, I have a request of the board for your support. The last, at our last meeting, we had a work session on the six-year plan. I'd like to add Bobcat Lane to that, I've had several requests, and I know it doesn't mean it'll be done anytime soon, but it just shows a good faith showing, so I'd appreciate if we can get that on the agenda, and I probably have to have another public hearing? No, okay, whatever it takes. That's all I got.
Supervisor Fidzikowski?
On that comment, the folks that spoke about that at the last meeting made some very good points, but, boy, we got a lot of roads that would, would like to be on that, that list, and, you know, I just think that we need to, when we look at the list again, if we're going to shuffle the cards, it's going to be a lot of disappointed people, but I think that may have to be done in light of what they presented, and I think they did a good job explaining their, their side of it, so. Well, another thing, I don't know if you were on the board, but several years ago, I asked that it be put on that six-year plan, and David told me, or told the board that there wasn't enough traffic, it didn't, it didn't meet the criteria. So, I dropped it, I never thought anything else about it, so I'm glad they brought it forward, I didn't, had no idea it was that many. Yeah. I really don't have any report.
Supervisor King?
Don't have no report, but I would like to thank Supervisor Blevins for coming out supporting Riner Fire Department Saturday, their annual Oster dinner fundraiser, and like to say, appreciate the other seven hundred and three people that stopped by. That's all I have.
Vice Chair Biggs?
Yeah, just a few things, I want to recognize that we lost a valuable community member, Ann Carter. She served on the Christiansburg Town Council, the Library Board, and the Airport Authority, and I saw in the paper that she had passed away, so I was very sad to see that. I really want to pursue the idea of having something done about solar, wind, whatever, if we need to ask the planning department, to ask the planning commission to be looking at this because it reminds me so much of the cell towers, and when everyone was coming to us with cell towers, then we were able to get together and make a plan, and we considered the federal regulations, Marty was invaluable, and we came up with, you know, where we should be, and I really think we need to do that because this isn't going to be the first request. And so, if there's consensus, I would, I would sort of look towards administration to get something going. Do you all feel the same way? Okay.
You mean to do a solar ordinance?
Yeah, we need something, yes.
How about if the board entertains a resolution asking the planning commission to look at the ordinance and the comp plan, it's a two-part thing, comp plan being where do you want to see these facilities, if at all, and where, and also have them reach out to parties that have interests such as the Farm Bureau?
Yeah, exactly.
And in the industry itself, I guess, so.
As well as community members.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, so, but, so...
I totally agree.
Make a resolution from this board, you could do it now, or we could bring it the next meeting, whatever you want to do, and just ask the planning commission with county staff to study it, yeah.
Yeah, okay, we could bring it to the next meeting.
To the next agenda, yes.
And I wanted to report that Craig and I attended the tourism meeting today, and these booklets came out, and hopefully you can get one for every board member. It's a visitor's guide Blacksburg and Christiansburg, and it's really sort of neat the way they did it because there's a lot of ways that you can get the information with your phone. And it looks like things are picking up with restaurants and picking up with hotels with, with being able to keep staff, and they're still trying to get up past their, I guess, their twenty nineteen averages. Also, last week, Angie and Brad and I attended a meeting for the Amicair Adoption Center, so I just want to put it out there, anyone that wants kittens, they will be coming soon. So, if you need a kitten, even if you don't need a kitten, you might want to stop and see the kittens. And then on the airport, I guess you all saw that we had the president of Baslania land, the big jet came, they had the Secret Service came down from DC and checked everything out, their Secret Service came, so it was a big event at the airport, it was really cool to see that. And I don't, one thing, let's see, I think that, oh, yes, the most important thing. I was really upset today about Nashville, and so I just want to express... And so, I just want to express all of our feelings towards the folks that lost children and family members to the tragedy that happened today in another school shooting. And that's, that's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Biggs. And on that note, again, just the sadness with the another school shooting. And that just brings me to want to thank this board again for your commitment to providing school resource officers. If, you know, if anyone questions, I know we had a speaker that says, why are we spending the money? Because our children are worth it. And today is just an example of why we need to be as proactive as possible. And while you can't put a price tag on the safety of our children. And so, I just want to first of all, thank this board for your continued support and commitment that we will fund the school resource officers as best we can because it is so important for, you know, just so sad what happened today in Nashville. Several other, just shout-outs. First of all, again, congratulations to the Ryanair Volunteer Fire Department on their 64th, 64 years annual Oyster Dinner. Todd King said he didn't cook my food, but he gave it to me. Okay, he served it to me, so congratulations for them. This weekend, I was able to also shout out to Bellevue United Methodist Church for their Helping Hands pantry fundraiser. It was a great turnout. So, that, those, that program provides over 400 families